Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of Tuesday, July 22, 2025. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance, and I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silverman to call the roll.
There, Carol.
Here.
Ken.
Yeah.
Two. Mr. Ginsburg.
Here.
Goldblum. Mr. Ekwembe.
Here.
Mr. Jefferson.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Commissioner Master.
Here.
Mr. Wilder.
Here.
Okay, good morning again, and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting of July 22. We'll begin this morning with our public hearing agenda for applications for new applications for work on designated properties. We'll then move to our public meeting agenda to look at an application that has already had a public hearing and is back today with revisions in response to our comments from that hearing. And then we'll move back to our public hearing agenda to review the rest of the new applications for work on designated properties. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to participate remotely or watch the proceedings. And with that, I will turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Harala.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Department Agenda with public hearing item number one, LPC 25-12069. This is an application for a binding report. It's in the borough of the Bronx, block 3247, Lot 10, One West Kingsbridge Road, the Kingsbridge Armory, Eighth Regiment Armory Individual Landmark. This is a medieval Romanesque-style armory building designed by Pilcher and Tachau and built in 1912 to 1917. The application is to demolish ancillary buildings on the site and construct a new building. And at the armory building to alter and create masonry openings, replace windows and roofing, add and remove ironwork, install solar panels, louvers, signage, and canopies, and perform site work and landscaping.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Madison Hernandez. I'm with the New York City Economic Development Corporation. Good to see you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and speak about this really exciting project. Today, you're going to hear a very detailed presentation from the broader team here and that highlights the historic and grand architecture of the Kingsbridge Armory. But before we dive into that, I think it's important that we ground ourselves in how we got to this moment today and all the work that's kind of gone into this project. For the past 30 years, the Kingsbridge Armory has been largely vacant. In that time, the city and community have seen two major redevelopment efforts fall short. First, in 2006 with a proposed shopping mall, and again in 2012 with a plan for an ice rink complex. Thanks to the sustained advocacy of local elected officials, community organizations, and Bronx residents, this effort is different. In August of 2023, EDC released a request for proposals, an RFP, following a nine-month community engagement process that brought together over 4,000 Bronx residents, students, workers, and business owners. Through workshops, site tours, surveys, and community board meetings, we developed it together for Kingsbridge Vision Plan, a blueprint led, co-led by Councilmember Sanchez and the Northwest Bronx Clergy Coalition. For the first time ever, we have a clear, community-driven plan and vision to guide the redevelopment of the armory. That vision is now driving the proposal moving through ULP, and we're happy to share that yesterday, the Bronx Borough President issued a conditional approval for the project, and we look forward to the next phase of the process with the City Planning Commission. In addition, this project has historic public support behind it, with $200 million in combined funding committed by Mayor Adams and Governor Hochul. All in all, it has taken years of advocacy, coordination, and deep community engagement to reach this point, and we're excited about the momentum ahead. With that, I'm going to hand it off to my colleague, Sarah, and thank you for your time. Thank you, Madison. Sarah Scher from Higgins Quays Barth and Partners. We are the historic preservation consultants for Eighth Regiment Partners, who are undertaking this project to adaptively reuse the Kingsbridge Armory and construct new affordable housing on the site. Austin Sukanga and I are very excited to walk you through this proposal. The rest of the project team is also here to answer any questions you may have. Kingsbridge Armory was designated an individual landmark in 1974 and listed in the National Register of Historic Places in 1982 as an outstanding example of military architecture. It is presumed to be the armory with the largest drill hall in the world. The armory is located on its own block off of the four-train Kingsbridge Road Station in the Bronx, bordered by Jerome Avenue to the east, West Kingsbridge Road to the south, Reservoir Avenue to the west, and West 195th Street to the north. In this site plan, we see the footprint of the armory, which includes the headhouse located here and the drill hall behind. These two rectangles behind the drill hall are non-contributing buildings that were constructed by the National Guard in the 1950s. They are located within the landmark boundary, which is indicated with this dashed line. Here we have an aerial view of the armory to show its immense scale. This is a vast red brick building designed at the Romanesque style as a fortress characterized by its turrets, crenellated parapets, and the vaulted drill hall roof. Again, this front piece is the headhouse, and behind is the drill hall. We'll be referring to these two pieces throughout the presentation, so just want to make sure that's clear. This is another aerial view of the building looking northwest. The armory sits within a residential neighborhood, and much of the housing stock was, consists of apartment buildings that were developed from the 1920s through the 1940s with some new development, as we can see here on the east side of the elevated subway. The proposal before you is for the rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of the Kingsbridge Armory as a multipurpose space with its primary use as an event venue and community gathering area. This project also includes the construction of a new public plaza around the perimeter of the site and a new 100% permanently affordable residential building behind where the current National Guard structures are located. As part of the adaptive reuse of the armory, proposed changes include new entrances on all sides to allow permeability into the building, but also to meet egress requirements, a new roof that meets energy and acoustic requirements with skylights and solar panels, new energy-efficient windows, including new glazed end walls at the ends of the drill hall, adding new railings at the headhouse to make this an accessible outdoor space, and new signage. All of this scope is shown in this rendering, and as you can see, the armory still maintains its dominance and solidity. I'll also note that this project is pursuing state and federal historic tax credits, and the work will also need to be approved by the National Park Service. We have been working with the State Historic Preservation Office in the lead-up to filing this tax credit application. So the Kingsbridge Armory was historically known as the Eighth Regiment Armory. It was designed by architects Pilcher and Tachau and constructed between 1913 and 1917 for the New York State militia. Here is the building still under construction in 1916. When the building was originally built, it had an asbestos roof at the drill hall. By 1938, the roof was already replaced, and it had been replaced with a rolled roofing system. I'll also point out in this image from 1938 of the Western Cupola on the turret here, which was modified to a vent in the 1950s. We'll be restoring it back to a cupola as part of this project. Going to the drill hall, we have this incredible photo of it under construction in 1915 to give you a sense of the engineering that went into the structure of suspending such a large, open space. It is 600 feet long by 300 feet wide and 120 feet tall and is completely columnless. And here's an image of an event inside the drill hall showing 10,000 guardsmen participating in a ceremony to honor Governor Lehman in 1942. This just shows the sheer size and capacity of the drill hall, and it would be a lost opportunity to not have its new use be something that can bring together large numbers of people. At the ends of the drill hall were these amazing expansive glass walls that were unfortunately replaced with opaque fiberglass in the 1950s. Part of the project will be restoring these to glass to bring more light into the drill hall. And then just some images of how the neighborhood has evolved around the armory as it was constructed and completed. This is an image from 1914, looking north along Jerome Avenue on the east side of the armory before the elevated subway went in, and there was just a streetcar. And then here are two images, on the left on the west side of the armory and on the right on the north side of the armory, showing primarily open land. Since then, as we saw in the aerial photo earlier, the neighborhood has developed with the arrival of the elevated subway and all of the apartment building construction. We see the construction of a new residential building as part of that continued evolution of the neighborhood. And then just to go through some existing conditions of the building. The building is brick with terracotta trim, and all of the roof surfaces have been replaced many times, most recently in the early 2000s. The multi-light windows around the building were also replaced in the early 2000s. As I mentioned, the Western Cupola seen here was replaced with a vent in the 1950s. A new copper cupola will be installed to restore the symmetry across the headhouse. A chain-link fence runs around the perimeter of the site, and behind it is a historic picket fence. The fence itself is very simple in design, however, there are a handful of bollards in the shape of missiles. We will be removing the both fences to open up the landscape to the surrounding community, but we will be keeping all of these bollards and incorporating them into the new landscape design. The sides of the drill hall, which you see here and here, have been replaced with an opaque plastic material. And then also along the west side of the armory, there are larger garage openings for truck loading. At the back of the armory, on the north side, there are the two non-contributing National Guard buildings. This one-story structure seen on the top left is a garage building that was built between 1951 and 1954. And then the two-story structure seen on the top right was constructed in 1958 to house lockers and classrooms. These are utilitarian brick boxes and not a significant part of the site's history. On the bottom photo, at the center of the north rear elevation, you can see there's a driveway down to the basement of the drill hall located here. There is a sunken areaway on either side of this driveway that will be infilled in order to construct the new residential building. Based on the unfinished concrete facade at this area, we know that the areaway was not intended to be seen originally, and Austin will show more photos of this condition later in the presentation. Here, there's a historic door and iron fence that's not currently accessible to the uncovered areaway. This historic ironwork will be relocated to a new opening at the north elevation. Here, we're still on the north side or the rear of the armory, but on the east end, next to the subway tracks, this is a stair enclosure at this corner that was originally meant to connect the basement mezzanine to the drill hall balconies, but was significantly modified and partially rebuilt in the 1930s, as seen in this circa 1930 photo here on the right. It was built for a very particular purpose and no longer serves this function and has been heavily stripped down to where it reads more as utilitarian in nature. It will be removed as part of the project, but the terracotta banding seen here will be salvaged and reinstalled along this elevation. And then to the Jerome Avenue side of the building, there's a narrow gap between the elevated subway seen here on the left and the armory. At the basement level, there are windows and door openings, all of which have metal grills and gates in front of them visually cutting off the neighborhood from the only side of the armory that is not currently behind a fence. And then moving from existing conditions to just some LPC approval context. First, the previous project at the armory to convert the building into an ice rink center. That project was initially approved in 2012, and then there was an amendment in 2019 at a Landmarks Public Meeting. As you can see, the four plates of the ice rink would have intersected with the glazed walls. Larger metal and glass door openings were approved up in west elevation with glass and metal canopies, as well as excavation to create a new driveway along the west side. Signage, including dimensional letters behind the glazed walls, eight stretch banners along the primary facade, and then these two 50-foot-long internally illuminated signs were also approved. As I mentioned, we're proposing to construct a new building to the north of the armory that is within the landmark designation boundary. The commission has approved new buildings on individual landmark sites before, and here are some within the past few years. On the left, we have 2,500 Jerome Avenue, not too far away from Armory, and included a new residential building on the landscape of St. James Episcopal Church. In the middle, in 2016, LPC approved the new Gilder Center at the Columbus Avenue-facing side of the American Museum of Natural History. And on the right, in 2020, this 20-story building seen here in the background was approved to occupy the back 54 feet of the individual landmark site of 315 Broadway, and then to connect to this portion of the building off the landmark site. All three projects were on individual landmark sites. All required demolition of existing structures on the landmark site, and all involved new contemporary architecture that used materiality to relate to the individual landmark. The commission has also approved new openings at individual landmarks to allow further adaptive reuse. On the left, we have 32 Avenue of the Americas, before on top, approved at the bottom. And on the right, we have Chase Manhattan Plaza, before on the top, existing condition on the bottom. Both projects included inserting new entrances and storefronts into expansive areas of solid masonry. The LPC findings for both projects noted that these new insertions were for the building's adaptive reuse and helped improve connections to the streetscape. And with that, I'll pass it along to Austin from FX Collaborative to take us through the proposed work. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today, and it's a great honor for me to be here. I just want to start by acknowledging that while it's fallen to me to present the design today, I am joined by my colleagues at Ofgang Architects, with whom we are collaborating on the residential portion of the project, and Scape Studio, with whom we are collaborating on the landscape. And so it's been a terrific, terrific process, the results of which we're very proud to share with you today. So as Sarah mentioned, there is a lot of scope involved in this project. I won't, I won't test your patience by reading through line by line, but you know, these notes are here for your reference should we want to return. But this is just a description of the scope involved in what we're doing to the armory, and then the new construction of the residential building in place of those ancillary National Guard buildings on the north side of the site, and finally, the site. And so this is how, this is the sequence with which I'll proceed through the design presentation. I'll start with what we are doing to the armory building itself, and then I'll talk about the new residential buildings, and I'll conclude with the landscape design. So just to orient ourselves, armory, National Guard buildings, and the site. The way we are thinking about this project is really guided by the enormous amount of program that we are putting into this enormous building. And it really is an amazing collection of very different programs that all have to sort of sit nicely together in this space. It includes a 17,000-person live events venue. It includes entertainment spaces for youth, like things like go-kart and bowling and paintball. It includes a cultural center. It includes great community facilities and commercial offices for local nonprofits groups. It includes light manufacturing spaces, and that's just all within the armory. And then, of course, we have close to 480 units of, as Madison said, all affordable, permanently affordable housing with ground floor retail and parking. And just to kind of state some of the guiding principles by which we're undertaking this project, number one is to celebrate the spirit of the building, right? And I'll get more into that in a second. Making it as accessible as possible so as many people as possible can experience this amazing building, maximizing its connection to its surrounding neighborhood, turning it from a kind of dark, enclosed cavernous interior space into a public amenity, supporting that incredible diverse array of programs that I just mentioned, and doing it all in the most sustainable way possible. So before I get into the details, and I know, you know, this body really is interested most in what we're doing to the exterior of the armory and the residential building. But everything that we're doing to the exterior is really driven by what's happening on the interior. So before I get into the details, I want to start with a sort of guiding, a guiding principle that is about celebrating the spirit of the building. When we were looking at this building, a kind of important realization that we had very early on that has maintained every sort of design decision since was a recognition that no matter what we did within this building or no matter what we did to the building, nothing that we could do would be as special as what the building already is. Nothing that we do or design in here will be as special as this kind of sublime four-acre, column-free space or these amazing structure and arches that shelters it. So conceptually, just as a concept, the idea was simply to bring in some light and make the space a little bit softer, and that's it, right? Overall, at least in concept, the idea is to open it up and maybe put down something like a carpet. Do no harm, right? So we took this idea of this carpet, this tapestry, and that became a kind of guiding metaphor for the rest of the project. The way that a tapestry is able to weave in multiple textures, multiple crafts, multiple traditions into a whole that becomes a tapestry that extends out into the landscape and makes the community more sustainable and extends into the landscape and really weaving together all these disparate programs, all these disparate uses into a single, into a single whole. So literally speaking, in red, you see that carpet, quote unquote, structurally inserted into the drill hall of the armory and how it enables, how it empowers all these different programs to happen. So in a, just to kind of nuts and bolts of it, we are adding a new floor into the drill hall, and that becomes the main venue and community space of the drill hall, above which we are sort of stepping things up to create a balcony around, all of which resides under the sill of the large arched openings on either end of the armory. This is kind of the diagrammatic key for the entire project. I say that because you can see that we are indeed going to great efforts to preserve the sublime space, preserve the structure and celebrate the structure of that space, and making it as accessible as possible to as many people as possible, all while kind of tucking below the sill of those arched windows. So that's the kind of main venue slash community space in the middle. You get, so that community space is a floor higher than the current drill hall level. The current drill hall level then gets transformed into an active, thriving sort of public concourse that's programmed with things like culture and entertainment, food and beverages. And really importantly, for this body to consider, is that that public concourse is accessible at all four corners of the building. And that's really driven by the need to egress out 17,000 people out of the building, most of whom have to egress out the way they came in, right? And this is driven by code. So that's, that means that the building not only becomes, you know, legally egressible and accessible, but also it also, it makes the building more inviting and more welcoming to the public so that instead of funneling everyone through one single historic entrance, it makes the whole building accessible from all around in the community, in the community. So there's the, a kind of view from the concourse level. You see that carpet structurally inserted, right, in wood, and you see how the edges of that carpet, that venue floor, gets pulled away to reveal things like the structure above and the historic headhouse balcony to the right. And because the site slopes down as the building goes east, whereas on the, for the most of the building, the new entrances are located up on this level, the entrances to the east are located down at Jerome Avenue, which is about 14 feet below, below the concourse level. And so again, all four corners of the building really get opened up to make that public concourse level accessible. So what that means for the outside of the building is that we are activating the drill hall proper in addition to the entrances at the headhouse. And you can see that we've carefully calibrated these openings to balance a number of things. It allows for an enormous amount of people to egress out, but it also calibrates the heights of those openings to be respectful of the elements all around the facade, like the baritons. This is a new term I learned from Sarah. You know, these are these turrets. And at the same time, allowing for that opening to be high enough, and I'm just, pardon for the going back and forth here, high enough to allow for events loading trucks to pull in directly off Reservoir Avenue into an internalized loading dock so that we don't have trucks idling on the street. So there's all these, like, all these different parameters that these openings are trying to balance, and we think we've found it. So let's just kind of go through now, elevation by elevation, what the, what interventions we're proposing for each elevation in the armory. So with the Kingsbridge elevation, let's just like work our way through. Here are those larger openings at the four corners of the building with canopies, metal and glass. We have additional openings. These are painted metal doors intended to blend with the color of the brick. These are egress-only. All of the windows in both the headhouse and the drill hall, we are replacing those windows with new high-performance windows. We are still keeping the design, the divisions of the lights and, you know, the break of plane and to simulate the double hungs. And then we are replacing the existing historic wood door in the center at the headhouse with new glass doors, and I'll show you how we're preserving the gates and wood doors at the same time introducing the glass doors. And then, as you'll see on the roof, we're providing for skylights and solar panels. So here's the main entrance doors at the historic headhouse. So you can see where we take these historic gates, and we're simply pinning them in the kind of, in the open position and replacing the wood doors with operable glass and metal doors, and then pinning those historic wood doors against, against the threshold. That's the main entrance. The two doors to the side of that, we are, we're simply pinning the iron gate but restoring the wood doors in place. And then along the southwest openings, closer look, here's, here are those egress-only doors intended to match the brick, and then, and a much more distinctly, a new glass and metal assembly at the corner. One important thing to note here is that because of the challenge of ensuring these new entrances are universally accessible, we are regrading the landscape around the armory to make sure that people can walk in from the street without having to use a side door, a side elevator. That means bringing the ground up to just above the existing terracotta water table line, and that really just happens on the west end of the building. Where the grade drops down towards Jerome, the water table remains in place, but here, we will be bringing that, that grading up above it. This is the west elevation as it is today on Reservoir Avenue. That's that tall truck gate that's there now and a couple existing openings. This is that corrugated fiberglass sheeting that's in place now. The idea is, again, two big corner entrances that serve as main entrances into the armory proper. New glazing in the middle, one of which is intended for events loading when needed. Otherwise, it just becomes division glass. The big arched windows themselves, we are replacing with new, with new glass curtain wall. There's a zoom-in version of that corner. And then on Jerome Avenue, I think if you remember the photo that Sarah shared, it's a pretty bleak corner right now. It's quite inactive because of the small punched windows and that solid brick wall and the big gate, the bar grates in front of those windows. So what we're simply doing is we're leaving in place sort of every third, every fourth punched window, and then we're taking the groups of three windows between them and turning them into new full-height floor-to-ceiling glass storefronts and entrances to really activate Jerome Avenue. So to zoom in on that a little more. So there are these two existing arched entrances on Jerome Avenue. We are keeping those masonry openings intact. We are pinning the historic iron gates off to the side so they, so they remain in place. And then we're refilling, we're re-infilling that masonry opening with new glass and doors. And then here, you can see new storefront and new entrances in between existing windows. We are removing these, these grates from those windows to try to make that Jerome Avenue side as active and as lively as possible. Here are those big arched windows that you saw from the inside earlier. You can see the proportions of, you know, these like very vertical divisions of lights in the original, the original glass. But you can also see, you can just make out every 13 feet or so, there are these stronger vertical lines, and that has to do with the vertical trusses that actually stiffen, hold up that glass end wall. So we are basing our new window on those trusses. So these strong vertical lines emphasize, in fact, the curtain wall is supported by those existing trusses. So these strong vertical lines emphasize, in fact, the curtain wall is supported by those existing trusses. And then the, the new larger glass lights are intended to reflect the proportions of the, the original glass while still being able to let in a lot more light, making it feel a lot more open and perform a lot better from an energy, energy point of view. So the, here's the existing, so here is the new kind of plane of glass. For acoustic reasons, interestingly, it looks like we will be going towards a cavity, a double glass wall, so to mitigate sound from passing in and out. So this really won't be visible from the outside, but a- at the end of the day, it will be a cavity wall, double glass cavity wall construction. And then finally, on the north elevation, this is maybe the least visible portion of the building because it is largely concealed by the existing National Guard buildings that were built in the 50s. Down here, there's an area way with a kind of unfinished wall. You know, it's, it's, the, the brick transitions to concrete down here and a series of punched windows. And simply what we're doing on this facade. So here you can get a better picture. Here's that concrete transitioning to brick. Here are those punch windows down here. That's the, you can see the area way. And so here, we're, we're actually abutting the residential building along the ground, along the ground floor. So the, if you trace the shape of the gray, that is where the residential building abuts. Above that, we are preserving all of these existing windows. And below that, we are introducing a series of, again, egress only, you know, metal doors that are really intended to allow people to egress out. And then you'll see later on in the presentation where we are creating one new additional main entrance at the middle of the, of the drill hall. Typical window replacements. So here's a kind of simulated double hung detail that we're proposing as a typical condition for all of the various punched openings around the armory. I will note that almost all of the, except for the upper arched windows, almost all the other windows in the armory have this iron bar grading outside the window. Because of, because of the need to activate the building and make it feel welcoming and making the tenants inside feel welcome, we are removing almost all of those bar grates from the windows. We are preserving them where they exist below the water table, so that there's still a remnant of that, of that fabric left in the building. But we feel strongly that it's important not to make the tenants feel like they're behind bars when, when they're in this building. So we are, we are opening those windows up and making them more luminous, more open. And then finally, on the roof, in addition to the skylights and the PV array that you saw earlier, we are also thickening the, the assembly of insulation and roofing above the existing structural deck to make the building perform better from a sustainability and energy efficiency point of view. So here is the existing condition of the roof right now. You know, it's just deck and purlines, purlins and about a four inch layer of insulation. So our proposal is to thicken that slightly, just a couple inches by adding an additional four inches of insulation on top of the existing deck and structure. And we propose that the roofing, because, you know, the roof, as Sarah noted, the roof of the drill hall has always been a pretty modest utilitarian material. It was asphalt. It's asphalt sheets now, they're, they're, they're not in great shape. And so the, we came to the conclusion that the most appropriate sort of analogous material would be a cold fluid applied roofing system, a PMMA system that would kind of reflect the, the nature of the asphaltic roofing previously, while still making sure that it will perform in a modern way. That roofing is interrupted every 35 feet or so with these copper ribs that reflect the locations of the, of the arches inside the building. And so again, you can see how we're preserving the reading and the profile of those copper, of those copper ribs above that additional couple inches of roofing. And maybe most importantly, this is a parapet detail. The, the roofing, even with those couple inches, it still reads in the way that it's always read, which is the roof sort of sits behind, tucked behind the existing brick and terracotta parapet of the, of the drill hall and headhouse. So the way that the roof relates to the rest of the building remains unchanged. It's just now going to be a better performing building. The solar panels will sit as close as possible to the roof and the skylight will protrude as little as possible from the roof. The roof of the headhouse, the roof of the headhouse is an occupiable roof. But right now, the existing parapet is too low to make it safe. And so we're proposing to add a simple metal picket guardrail, just tracing the inside line of that parapet to make it code compliant. The clerestory windows that occur when the monitor of the roof sort of pops up above the barrel vault has these existing sort of nine-square grid squares of windows. And so we're replacing those windows in kind, again, with higher performing assembly, higher performing windows. But then on the north facade, there's two zones where those windows, the, the glass of those windows have to turn into louvers for the parking lot ventilation and the makeup air for the light manufacturing program of the building. And so when it's glass, it's just, you know, it, it's intended to replicate the existing division of lights. And then where it's louvers, the idea is to make those louvers reach secondary to the primary configuration of those, of those divisions. And then finally, you, you will surely have noticed these sort of large striped gray zones on the north facade. And that is because we are trying to avoid placing mechanical units visible to the public or visible on the roof or sitting, you know, on some dunnage somewhere. So we actually have a strategy in place to create mechanical mezzanines. It's inside the geometry of the, of the drill hall, louvered to the exterior along the north facade. And so these are just about, you know, 14-foot-high zones of louvers that exist above the, the balcony floor. And these are serving heat pumps for the entirety of the, for the entirety of the, of the drill hall. And so those louvers exist on all the bays along the north facade, except for three, the two ends and the middle. And that's because the two ends in the middle are the bays that are most visible from the public right of way. And then these bays where the louvers exist are largely concealed by the residential building that I'll get into in a second. I will note, just as an aside, that this is a strategy that we think builds on, but improves on the previously approved hockey rink mechanic proposal, where in that proposal, these mechanical zones were kind of open to the, to the sky. It looked like large carve-outs out of the, out of the roof that really interrupted the curvature of that barrel roof. And we thought it was important to, to preserve the, the curvature of the roof, even if it's not, you know, visible to everyone at all times. We're also designing for a bunch of signage around the building. So there are blade signs at the corners of the building that sort of sit between the small arched windows. There's dimensional lettering that will reside within the new corner main entrances. We imagine a large freestanding sign out in the landscape that sort of announces the, the armory proper. And then leveraging the height of the two towers to mount changeable cloth banners, the content of which will just depend on whatever's playing that week. And then on the east elevation, additional cloth banners behind the large arch windows. This is the Jerome Avenue elevation. Again, dimensional lettering at the entrances, digital signage behind the storefront, and then additional surface-mounted signage on the brick at the corners, you know. Well, I'll show, I'll show you that, that is in a second. And then finally, on the west elevation, additional cloth banners behind the arched windows. Again, blade signs at the corners and dimensional lettering at the corners, at the corner entrances. So here are some examples of what we have in mind for those blade signs. The aluminum, the, along Jerome Avenue, those surface-mounted signs that I had mentioned at the corners, you know, these are just intended to advertise the, the event that's happening that, that day or, you know, now playing. And then illuminated, illuminated signs behind storefronts are for tenants that are not, that are not the, the, the live concert venue, but simply other tenants in the building that need to sort of have a presence on the street. So the metal dimensional signs at the entrances, we imagine to be quite simple, really just orienting devices. And then the large freestanding sign in the landscape to be something like frosted glass and metal letter, something modest, but nevertheless effective. So that was a lot on the armory itself. I'm just going to now quickly go through the residential building north of the armory. So here's a, here's a view of those ancillary buildings to the north. Just to give you an idea of how we arrived at the design that we arrived at. We started with amassing that we thought was a good, a good starting point in terms of length and in terms of height for that site. In terms of length, trying not to exceed the length of the armory itself, right? And becoming a kind of concealing wall. And then the height, a height that we thought 165 feet, that packed in as much new affordable housing as possible without making an impact from visible, you know, view sheds along the public rights of way. So if we started with that as a starting point, we, we, we then kind of widened the sidewalk in front of it to make the, the public realm better as an experience on, on 195th Street. We then cut in the two ends. And this was a really important move, and you'll see why in a second as well. This was an important move because it really allows you to see the, the way that the baritons right now wrap the corner, right? So this, the armory is, is a dimensional thing. And we thought it was important to defer to how the armory turns that corner on those two ends. And then we introduced a large cut right down the middle to, to provide a, a community-oriented, oriented entrance on 195th Street, so that you don't have to walk all the way to Kingsbridge Road, but actually can get into the armory from, from here. This is particularly important because there are schools right across the street. There's a bunch of schools actually, all along Education Mile, going up Reservoir. And so given the community-oriented programs in this building, like after-school basketball and athletics, we thought it was important to make sure that there's dedicated entrance there as well. And then we articulated these blocks as, you know, with, with the typical things like dormers and setbacks. And this is really to make sure that it doesn't feel like it's a, it's a foreground building that's trying to compete with the headhouse, but rather a, a piece of the existing residential fabric that, you know, that defines itself on the north side of the site. And then articulating and activating it so that as you walk down 195th Street, it feels human scale, it feels responsive to a regular person rather than being a monotonous wall all the way down. The result is, is a building that leaves a lot of area off the table. It could have, you know, as of right, could have been a lot longer, it could have been a lot higher. But the design and development teams thought that this felt appropriate to, and in deference to the existing armory building. So here's the, the north elevation. And you can see a couple of things happening as we go. One, you can see where we've picked up on the red brick of the armory and then threaded in, weaved in like a tapestry, other colors to activate through a series of gradients, the length of that building, so that it's not a, you know, a single massive red brick building. And then where, in the same way that the roof of the armory has these kind of arched expressions every 30 feet or so, the setback floors in the building are folded and pleated to reflect that kind of larger rhythm. Again, it's, it's a kind of nod to the armory without trying to replicate it or, or aid it. The entrance, the 195th Street entrance is bridged over by an amenities floor of, of the residential building. This is the, the south elevation of the, of the residential building. So you can see where that, that pleading comes all the way down. And this is really important because there's only 20 feet really between the back of the residential building and the back of the armory. And this is, you know, this is driven by the constraints of the site and what's legally, what's legally allowable. But what these pleats allow us to do is it gives every sort of, every living room in every unit an oblique view out to the sides of the site. So they're not looking head-on at those, you know, at those louvers and the armory itself. The east elevation. West elevation. And you can see now how these buildings appear in the public realm. So this is from Kingsbridge Road, just on the other side of the elevated. And you can see really the impact that we achieved by, by trimming those corners back. It's, you know, it's, it, how much of the, how little or much of the residential building is visible? This is from further down, further down Jerome from St. James Park. You could just see the, the bulkheads of the residential popping out. And we're quite far away at this point. From under the elevated, it's really not visible. From Kingsbridge Road, when you're just across the street, it seems hard to believe because the residential building is admittedly taller than the peak of the, of the armory roof. But because this building is so massive, that this is a huge building, it just, it just prevents you from, from seeing the, seeing the building. So that's, that's why we felt comfortable with the height that we're proposing, because you can't see it. You can't, you start to see it when you pull further back. So if you walk further back on Davidson, you can just start to see the bulkheads peeping out behind the turrets. So from Grand Avenue, similar, very little of the, just the bulkheads popping out. And again, the impact of trimming those corners in, celebrating the baritons that wrapped the corner of the armory, trimming the, the, the ends of the residential building, what that really also does is it allows you to almost miss the, the presence of the new residential building relative to the armory. So this is the view from, from Kingsbridge and Reservoir. And you can really see, or again, not see that residential building. Again, here. And you could just point, you could just see the bulkhead popping up there, but otherwise quite invisible. And then really, the only, you know, obviously it's visible from, from the north when you look southeast. But again, I would just point out to you, the ability to see the, the corners of the armory wrapping around so that you don't see just a flat elevation, but you see it as a dimensional object in the round. So I, I just want to emphasize something that Sarah noted, which is that we are applying for state historic tax credits. And so the design of this armory, we, you know, we're, we're, we're being held to the fire by you all, but we are also being held to the fire by, by Parks and Shippo, which means that this has to be a building that has to reflect the Secretary of Interior's mandate to create buildings that should look of its time. There is a reason why we didn't start going down the avenue of replicating arches and turrets. We, we, we thought it was, it needed to defer to an honor and take pointers from the existing armory while still making it clear that this is really a background building meant to appear more as part of the city fabric, not as a north headhouse to the, to the drill hall. So there's the, the new opening on the north elevation. Again, you can see the historic gates pinned to the side, bridged over by the amenities floors of the, of the residential building. A view from the northeast corner. Again, seeing the ends of the buildings pulled in so that you can see the, the building in the round also from the east side, not just from the west. A proposed sort of palette of materials, starting from kind of the, the armory red and pulling into the, into the cooler gray tones. And some examples of, of how we've achieved this before. This is a building that our firm did at 11 Ocean Parkway that kind of achieved a similar result using subtle transitions of brick and relying on, on the craft and articulation of of that brick to really make it sing. And then finally, and I apologize for going over time here, but I just want to conclude with some comments on the landscape. This is the existing landscape that we are transforming into this. So the plaza on the southwest is really intended to provide for this community what doesn't really exist in this neighborhood right now, spaces for, you know, there's like plenty of parks. Aqueduct Walk is a beautiful biophilic walk along the neighborhood. But there isn't really a great space for an urban community gathering, things that can be programmed with things like pop-ups. And so we're, we're creating a landscape in which that can all happen. We're including a small canopy in the air, in the, at the southwest corner. And this is really intended to honor some of the activity that already happens on the site now. There's an informal sort of sidewalk market that's really vibrant, but, you know, but congested in the site now. So just picking up cues on, on, on that and creating a space for, for pop-up markets or some, you know, program tied to an event, maybe they're selling merch, maybe they're, you know, maybe this is tied to a graduation that's happening inside or the various community uses happening. And then along, along the, the, the west side of the armory, this is along Reservoir Avenue, there is a grove of really beautiful mature trees that we are preserving. I think we're keeping up to 20 trees, something like that. We can confirm that. But, but there are real treasure on the site. And, and so our plan is to keep them and design the landscape around them, kind of creating an LA, we call it the Kingsbridge LA on the west side of the site. Sort of in a field of beautiful materials like granite and brick that evoke, that evoke the armory, the materiality of the armory now. All the while incorporating things like seating and benches so that it operates like a real public community gathering space. Here's some, here's an additional look at the, the market canopy that we're, we're citing at the southwest corner. Again, it's a kind of homage to the, to the arches of the, of the armory without making it too literal. Some look and feel for the, for the paving that we're imagining at the site. So with that, I just want to thank you for your incredible patience through that very long presentation, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Great, thank you very much. There is a lot to go through, and you went through it very efficiently and methodically. So thank you for doing that and making it so clear. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
I do.
Yes. Please, sorry, was that Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yep.
Go ahead.
So I had two questions. The first one is, is this building all electric besides emergency generators?
That's correct.
And the second one is, the bridge at the 195th Street entrance that's up two stories, why was that necessary?
Yeah, I'm going to invite my colleague Shiva Gomi from Ofgang Architects up to, to speak to that.
Good morning, thank you for having us. My name is Shiva Gomi, I'm the Director of Planning at Ofgang. Commissioner, one of the main reasons that we felt that connection is necessary because we're envisioning this building as one piece. We didn't want to break up the building into two separate entities. So the idea was the opportunity, we saw an opportunity for connecting these two portion of the buildings together and have like a more coherent design for the residential building and create this opportunity of having the space for the amenities for the residents. And also, it's kind of like framing that void between the two wings of the residential building that if you, if you're higher up, not on the pedestrian level, but if you're higher up, you can kind of see the two towers at the headhouse getting framed. So that was another opportunity to create that kind of frame to see the two towers at the headhouse. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Goldblum.
Hey, thanks. So going back to the main rendering, the gray that's been chosen for the roofing material is kind of a charcoal gray, a relatively dark gray. Is that rendering correct?
You're asking about the armory, right?
Right, the main armory building.
Yes, it would be a gray.
Like a darker gray, because I, on one of the images that showed a very, very light color.
The intent is to make it, to be completely honest with you, I don't know exactly what gray. But it's something that we would, you know, make sure with staff to make sure it's appropriate.
Great. What, in the, in earlier comments, it was noted that the Borough President gave conditional approval. Do you know what the conditions were?
Where Madison went.
She's coming.
Madison, can you speak to the conditions on Bronx Borough President Gibson's conditional approval?
Just to make sure I heard your question correctly, the conditions that were offered by the Bronx Borough President, correct?
Okay.
So largely, the report was very optimistic and positive in terms of what the armory was offering. There were conditions on looking at the AMI levels and looking at the affordability and and the sizes of the rental units that will be offered. And then in addition, ensuring that there is sustainability, which Austin can speak to, that there are already committed efforts to ensuring that the most sustainable practices will be utilized within this building. And then in addition, I believe there were, I think, some conditions on the transportation opportunities around the area and kind of working with the MTA to ensure that folks who want to access the armory have the ability to do so in an easy and convenient way. So those were some of the conditions that were provided within the report.
Thank you. And the canopy, the, the, the market canopy, the market that you talked about, the, the informal street market is very, very popular. Is the canopy big enough?
The intent is not to replicate the informal market, simply to pay homage to it. We had a, we are, we've had meetings with the Street Vendor Project who actually expressed no interest in the canopy itself, kind of, and wanted to know more about, you know, the configuration of the, of the curb edge for legal street vending. So we recognize that pop-up markets are not street vending, they're two separate things. And so the intention is not to try to take that activity and place it here. It's just a kind of nod to, you know, the texture and culture of the neighborhood.
Hey, thanks.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner May.
Thank you. Thank you for the clear presentation. I have a couple of topics on the residential building. You spoke about the corners angling to reveal the volume of the, of the drill building that didn't appear to actually happen on the east side. There's a low portion. Could you speak to that? Yeah, maybe we'll do that first. There it was.
Yeah. So we, the intent was for that to have to reveal the, the roof of the, of the armory here. It's true that it's sort of cans the other way at this corner. This right now is ground floor retail and second floor double height retail at this corner that sort of needs the, needs the area. So we tried to do it in a way, do it in a way that didn't felt like it was kind of abruptly just blocking, blocking that end, but, you know, still sort of working with the geometries of the, of the residential building. So that's why the, the low piece remains sticking out while the high portion of the building does, can't back.
Thank you. Could you speak to the, how you set the dimension between the residential building and the drill hall? You noted that it's, it's 20 feet and I assume you've, that's a vision for residential light in there?
Yes, it's driven by what's allowable under City of Yes. And we have a, it's, it's driven by our, our study of the zoning.
And then a final question, could you speak to how you set the upper height of the new storefront insertions around the perimeter of the building, the existing drill hall?
Oh, I see, the, the height of the new corner openings?
Yes.
Sure, so pardon me, I, I.
Not the residential building.
Yeah, I know it's, like, dizzying to watch people flip through slides back and forth, so I apologize. It really has to do with the, it really has to do with two things. One, it has to be high enough, sorry. It has to be high enough, well, okay, a couple of things. We're making these big openings into the, into the masonry drill hall, areas of plain masonry without ornament, but still we're making these openings and we recognize that, that, you know, it's disruptive. One of the things we notice is that when you have openings of different heights, it gets to look very chaotic. And so we gave ourselves the task of making all the openings the same height all the way around. Once we gave ourselves that rule, and admittedly, that's a self-imposed rule, one thing that drives it is this opening here is actually the truck loading dock for events loading. And we want, we needed the ability to bring trucks in right off of Reservoir so that we don't have events trucks, you know, idle on the curb all day, which would have a negative impact on the community. So that opening has to be high enough to allow a WB, I think it was a WB 63 truck into that opening. At the same time, we were cognizant of and, and sensitive to the, the rhythm of these barter that run all around the headhouse. So we also didn't want to exceed, you know, the bottoms of those conical portions. So this is really the sweet spot for us, high enough to let in a truck, allows us to achieve the evenness of openings, but low enough so that we feel it's not interrupting the, the, kind of visual harmony of the ornaments.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder.
Good morning, thanks for the presentation. Frank kind of asked one of my questions regarding residential. So for the space between the residential building and the armory, on the two ends, I wanted to know what's, what do you expect to happen or what's planned to happen at those entrance sides and that kind of dead, dead end area?
Yep, that's a great question. So as you can see, those openings are occurring not only on the elevation facing Reservoir and Jerome, but also around the corner. And so that's the other thing that these kind of angles achieve is the ability to bring people sort of more naturally into that, into that space. So what we have here is a, is a gate, and we're actually reusing portions of the historic fence to, to construct that gate. But we have a gate that will be egress only so that when, when you have people egressing from the above floors, they can egress out this way, but they can't get in. So this, this is really just a way to get into those entrances. This is true here, up at Reservoir, and it's also true here, down at Jerome. So again, open area, that little thing.
It's not as deep as it looks on the drawing.
It's not deep. There's a, there's a gate here that's intended to be able to open out when you have people egressing out through emergencies, but otherwise remain locked and guiding people in, into the building at those corners.
And is that, are those two areas, how, can you clarify accessibility from the north side? Like if I'm at the front of the residential building going into the armory, is how, clarify your, how accessibility works, or am I coming around the building?
Yeah. So all these entrances are accessible directly off the street. This is, this is an area where in order to have accessibility, you have, we're actually borrowing space from the residential building to accommodate a small elevator. So you come in, you could either climb the steps or walk into the, walk into the building, use the elevator to get up to that upper level. So this is the one area that a ramp wouldn't fit dimensionally.
What's the difference in elevation?
About seven feet. Whereas here, we're able to achieve accessibility because we have ramps. And down at Jerome, we're, we're able to achieve it because the sidewalk is low. Here, it's the one place where we do need the assistance of an elevator.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson, followed by Commissioner Master.
This level is at grade, correct?
This is, grade is everywhere, but is as close to grade as we, as we can get.
So the mezzanine level is above this?
That's correct.
The mezzanine, if you go to the diagram of the mezzanine level.
So let me just clarify.
Right, how do you get like down below that?
So, so this is the.
Just from the corners, you only get it from the corners, right? From the edge of the building, nothing from the interior?
That's right, so.
Okay.
We're, sorry, let me just, so you can actually see this, this opening here? That's, that's correct.
Commissioner Master.
I know that you had talked about the bollards and the grills, and you had said something about retaining as many bollards as possible. Can you just review what you had said about the iron grills and the bollards?
In terms of the bollards, there are, as far as we can count them, six bollards around the, around the landscape. The intent is to, is to salvage them, restore them, protect them, and then reintegrate them into the landscape. I don't unfortunately have a drawing for you that shows where they get put back, but the commitment is to put them back into the landscape. As far as the grills go, we are, let me just get to an elevation here. We are, we are retaining all the bar, bar grades in front of the windows below the water table line and then removing it for these taller windows above the water table line.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
The mezzanine level, which is, which I find fascinating, is only for performances, correct? It's a typical a performance level. The, the lower level is just community level, correct?
No, so one of the really beautiful ways that this project has developed is that what's become clear is that this space will only be used for concerts 50 days out of the, out of the year. And the rest of the time, it will be used as a community space for after school basketball, athletics, we imagine, like high school graduations to happen here. I could imagine, you know, the Bronx Flea Market happening up here. So we imagine this as a community space.
You imagine playing basketball there? Okay.
I mean, this should really feel like the living room for this neighborhood that then gets turned into a, an event space on the weekends.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so I think we'll move to public testimony, and we may have more questions after that. And I will note that we don't have any in-person sign-in sheets, but I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the room who would like to testify on this item. Okay, Andrea Goldwin.
Oh, I didn't get the form.
Okay, good morning Chair Carroll and Commissioners, and especially welcome to the new Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is pleased to support this plan to restore and reuse the Kingsbridge Armory. Our comprehensive 1988 survey of New York City Armories starts by noting that Armories are among America's most unique and picturesque building types. Developed in response to social and economic unrest during the decades between the Civil War and World War I, these structures combined ornate medieval forms with the latest engineering innovations to create images of strength and power. Prominently located, they served as community centers, offering lavish club rooms and recreational facilities to members of the regiment, as well as space for community exhibitions, sporting events, and social gatherings. And here we are. The monumental medieval Romanesque style Kingsbridge Armory meets all these criteria. One of the largest armory spaces in the world, it was completed in 1917 and has been a community anchor notable for its tremendous size, block-long brick facade, and charming historic illusions such as crenelations, towers, and turrets. Unfortunately, the armory has been largely vacant and underused since the Eighth Regiment left. Unfortunately, the armory has been largely vacant and underused since the Eighth Regiment left in the, in the mid nineties. And even before that, in the nineteen eighty-eight report, there were notes of the poor condition of the building envelope. After many years of neglect, we're glad the armory will at last be restored. In general, we support the planned alterations. However, we'd like to make a few suggestions that could enhance the connections to the building's history. Uh, the renderings for the ground-level entrances and storefronts are, uh, a little light in detail. Um, and there are a few different designs. The minimal glass and metal scheme appears slight for this robust structure. Uh, perhaps a more uniform design with stronger elements would be more appropriate. Wherever the intact historic grills and gates are not being reinstalled, we hope they will be restored and incorporated into other locations, perhaps at the storefronts, the landscaping, or the interior. We do not oppose demolition of the mid-century National Guard buildings, but note that it is unfortunate that according to the State Preservation Office's website, uh, some ten million dollars was spent just a few years ago on a renovation. Uh, we appreciate that the new residential buildings will be clad in materials, uh, that reflect the colors of the armory. Perhaps the final decisions on that should be made after the building is cleaned and restored. In the heart of a busy neighborhood, adjacent to the subway, the historic armory is a resource that should be celebrated and active. Over the decades, uh, time and energy has been spent on plans that did not come to fruition. We hope that this one will. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Conservancy's views.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? All right. Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, Stephen Thompson, to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District's Council. As passionate advocates for adaptive reuse and as pro-housing preservationist, HTC supports both this beautiful and sensitive adaptive reuse, as well as the addition of new housing on this site. We find the changes to be largely appropriate given the building's no use, but we have a few comments. We find the new residential building to be about four stories too tall. The new building should be more deferential to the existing landmark and ideally not reach the height of the armory roofline, especially the height of the two armory towers that dominate the structure. Additionally, we feel that the glass and metal market canopies are inappropriate and in need of design refinement. We note that they are proposed as shade structures, however, a glass canopy will not provide the necessary shade. We recommend another material be chosen for the canopy. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Victorian Society was happy to see this application to stabilize, restore, and utilize the spectacular Kingsbridge Armory. The proposed changes will enhance the overall character of the building and halt for the deterioration. The proposed demolition of modern accretions, including the National Guard building, the secondary exit stair, and the corrugated plastic infill at the gable ends of the drill hall is both sensible and appropriate. The small amount of historic material which the applicant would remove seems acceptable in the context of this enormous structure and in response to the new functions being proposed. The new materials, including the glazed infill, louvers, doors, skylights, solar panels, and roof railings are simply detailed and will not call undue attention to themselves. We are particularly pleased with the use of banners as signage, which seems to be fitting to this medieval-style structure. But the presentation is lacking in actual material and finished samples, in manufacturers' catalog cuts, and in detailed drawings. As an example, we couldn't find dimensioned details or a finished sample for the new storefront infill. It appears to be standard square aluminum tubing set directly on the walking surface without a stone curb. This sort of storefront detailing is too light for a building this massive, and aluminum framing installed without a curb will rot when winter salts are applied. A more appropriate weightier storefront infill is needed, and detailed drawings and finished samples are needed for all new materials. Now, at the site, the ponderous rusty steel supports proposed for the market canopy remind us of the remains of a partially demolished highway support structure. And this hardly seems like an appropriate image to the entrance for a, a new facility in the Bronx. The proposal seems lacking in the kind of signage which is easily changed as different uses are booked into the space. Historic entertainment venues often featured sign boxes adjacent to the entrance. Uh, this is the time, uh, to consider how to meet this need. Now, while we understand that the interior is not the commission's purview, the structures proposed for the drill hall seem heavy and opaque. We think a lighter touch could help to maintain the open airy feeling of the drill hall. We could only have hoped that the new apartment structures wouldn't exceed the height of the armory roof, or at least its towers. The tendency of the city to propose towers everywhere, regardless of the context, reveals a disregard for the principles of urban design. Despite the proximity to the landmark, properly scaled and well-designed apartment buildings here would be a net benefit. As it is, we limit our objections to their height only because of the importance of finally getting a viable project moving forward. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right. Our next speaker will be Ricky, Ricky T. James. All right, Ricky, you may unmute yourself and turn on your camera, should you wish.
Hello, can you?
Yes.
Uh, I'm, um, American Legion Individual Son and family members of the American Legion. I'm also a preservationist. I'm also a designer and also an associate architect. The issue today that I would like to speak on, on the few issues that, that are interesting to me, massing of, of, of the public in during, in, in the Bronx during that area, in Kingsbridge is, 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 is great. There is a church on the side of the, the armory and also office building for, for government individuals. I'm looking for contextuality in order for it to flow with the, the massing of, of that area. Uh, the, I am pleased with the preservation of, of the grills on the gate and the balance on the building. The city of Y S does get a shout out for the residential building. I, I appreciate that. That's really nice for them. Also, the transportation, uh, which is, um, a burden for that, that area. Uh, I'm glad that you are considering the issue of the transportation inside of Kingsbridge area. Uh, also the historic, I would like historic landmark signage on the Kingsbridge building, showing the history of Kingsbridge. Uh, it is an extensive history and it is a part of that community. Thank you. End of, end of testimonial.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right. Seeing none, I will note for the record that, uh, Bronx Community Board Seven supports the proposal with a recommendation to reduce the height and decrease the number of dwelling units. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to turn back to the team and ask if you'd like to respond to any of the comments.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah Sher again from Higgins Quays Barth and Partners. Uh, first to address the comments about historic fabric. We are, we are doing our best to preserve as much historic fabric on the site. In terms of the metalwork, we are keeping every historic gate that is around the perimeter of the site. We are maintaining the entire, uh, basement level of historic grills on the front facade, so that that will always be retained and, um, remembered. Uh, for the bollards, we're keeping every missile-shaped bollard on the site. And then the picket fence, even though it's very simple in design, we are keeping part of it for the, um, ends of the gap in between the new building and the armory. In terms of the, the height of the new building, you know, we're trying to balance both getting as much affordable housing on, in this project as possible with, um, keeping the armory as the primary piece of the site. So we looked at the relationship sort of from a bulk perspective. Because the armory is so large in both height and width, we felt that there was an opportunity to go slightly taller because its massiveness allows something slightly taller to sort of recede behind it. Even though it is taller, we, as you saw throughout the views from the presentation, it's quite minimal in comparison to the armory. Um, in terms of the, um, detailing of the storefronts, we're happy to work with staff to beef those up a bit. Um, you know, we were showing a design intent, but can obviously add some more solidity to that, so that there's, there's a stronger infill presence. Uh, for the signage, um, you know, the signage along, uh, Jerome Avenue will have content that's switching out all the times. The banners will be able to switch out for events. Uh, we're also happy to incorporate uh, the history of the armory into that signage as well, per, um, the testimony. And I think, and then in terms of the, the canopy structure on the, the landscaping, also happy to work with staff to adjust the materiality of that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you Commissioners. Do we have any final questions? All right. Okay. So I think we'll close the hearing and move to our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Thank you. Commissioner Quembe, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The hearing is closed and we're going to begin our discussion. Um, this is going to be, there's a lot to discuss. Um, so I'm going to just provide some context before we begin. Um, and I do, you know, I want to, some initial thoughts, um, here is, um, I want to talk a little bit about adaptive reuse and how important of a tool it is. Those of us who have, are preservationists or have been in, working in the preservation area and universe for years, um, understand that this is a really important preservation tool. And I'm, um, I'm excited that you're also seeking tax credits and working with the State Historic Preservation Office. Adaptive reuse is not easy and, um, I would say in a building like an armory, it is exceptionally challenging to find new uses that, um, are compatible and as, and, but to ensure the vitality and long life of our landmarks, we have often supported adaptive reuse and supported, um, a lot of flexibility in accommodating, making changes that accommodate the new use. And, uh, and we have done so actually in another application for this site, which some of you may remember, which was for the ice skating rink, where we did allow for exterior signage and banners and louvers and modifying window and door openings. And, um, and considering the materiality of the roofing and, um, and the clerestory. So, um, we have, uh, certainly allowed for flexibility to ensure the continued life success of our landmarks and, um, having done so in this particular spot. So I'm really excited to see this project today. I think, um, it's, has been a long journey. And while the last scheme that we wholeheartedly supported didn't, uh, move along, I, I, I'm really excited that the plan we're seeing today really is, um, meeting the moment and addressing, sort of pressing, community and city needs, such as, you know, the community uses and the, uh, housing, of course. And I understand that that, um, was a, uh, added more challenges to the equation as you developed the various aspects of that and how you could accommodate that here. So I, I do think that this is, and, you know, a really wonderful proposal that you're bringing to us. And I recognize that it has a lot of support, both through the, from the city and elected official community. And just one comment on the, um, new building, you know, the commission has approved new buildings on landmark sites. And, uh, as we, the applicant presented some examples in the beginning. And sometimes those buildings have a design relationship to the landmark and sometimes they don't. Sometimes they're contrasting or they are, um, designed to read as part of the cityscape uh, behind the building or around the building rather than the building itself. And so, um, while we heard that the Secretary of Interior Standards, which is being, uh, applied in, uh, the use of tax credits, it does, um, require that you design a new building that is of its time. I think that that can be compatible with appropriateness as we discuss, you know, our, our usual, um, factors, which are height and scale, materiality, design. And I think, um, you know, this building is deferring in its relationship and materials and, um, its sighting, pulling it away from the side and pulling it back on each end and the opening to provide views of the, and retain a three-dimensionality to the armory. And, um, and while it is taller, I think that, um, in most views, it is, um, because of the massive size of the armory, it is seen as part of the cityscape, which is certainly an approach the commission has taken with new buildings on landmark sites. And so I think, you know, we'll have a robust discussion about the changes to the armory and the new building. Um, but I think that this is really exciting and I'm, you know, thank you for being so thoughtful in bringing this proposal to us. Um, and so we're going to start now. Commissioners, you may want to turn to slide twenty-three if you have the presentation up, just to go through the list of changes to the armory building that may hide your, uh, guide your discussion, not hide, but guide your discussion as you go through each component of the app, of the, uh, application for the armory portion of the building, of the project. So, um, we're going to begin our discussion and I'm just going to start with Commissioners who have, uh, specific experience, either, you know, geographically or in terms of housing sustainability and adaptive reuse. So we'll start, um, with Commissioner Ginsburg. Would you take the lead on this?
I'd love to. And I want to second what Chair Carroll said. This is a great project. An adaptive reuse isn't easy. And so I'm going to go through some comments and so on. But I think this is approvable, working with staff to develop some details that may not be fully fleshed out. And, you know, it's difficult to make the new uses function with, while, while preserving the building, as can be seen by the failed previous projects. And although the interior is not in our purview, I agree that space is spectacular. The only thing that may rival it is Grand Central Station. And the fact that the whole space is preserved to be perceived in its entirety, I think is very important. I have to note, this seems to be a really sustainable project, all-electric. Those double-glazed end walls, double glazing has done, been done more in Europe than here. And I realize they were doing it for acoustics too, but from a energy perspective, it's a home run. The integration of PV on the roof is really good. I would also note, having had personal experience, that SHPO and the Department of Interior Standards are different than our standards and balancing and fitting into both is not simple. So now for just a few things that I'd suggest working with or curious what other Commissioners say. In general, the signage is fine, but some of it is undeveloped. And working with staff, I'd like to see additional details. The residential building is big, although very much a background building. But that size creates more housing and it's all affordable. And I think that's really important and probably also important for making the project pencil out. The one thing. The one thing I might question, which I'm curious what other commissioners say, is the bridge between the two segments of the, of the residential building seems to me somewhat unfortunate. It'd be nice if it was open and the buildings could be connected below grade to make it one building in two segments. But I'm curious what the, my other fellow commissioners say. And finally, I think the landscaping will enhance the armory and allow access. And actually, there's one other comment I have, the storefront, I think the black color of the framing should be looked at as something, a gray or even a, a red or something, just to see, again, this is working with staff to make it a little less, stand out a little less. But it, it's a great progress that I can fully support.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to turn to our Bronx Commissioner, Commissioner Goldblum.
Thank you. I know this building really well. I did a project with it, with some students a few years ago. It's, the key to this building is understanding the scale. I think probably most of the people in the room here know the Park Avenue Armory. This is six times as big as the Park Avenue Armory. And I think most people would consider the Park Avenue Armory to be a pretty big thing. So the scale of it has to figure into every consideration that we have. And I think that that scale is, and the funny thing about the building is it's, not only is it monstrously large, but it reads as monstrously large. Some armory buildings have a very decorative headhouse and then the back's like a train shed. This, the architecture goes around the building, creates a monumental presence on the building. And, you know, the, the train shed roof actually is in scale with the headhouse, which is a remarkable, unusual condition for, for buildings of this type. And I think all these considerations for me make this application quite, quite appropriate. I think the most important thing from the community's perspective is that this happens. This has been a gaping hole in the heart of this, of this part of the Bronx. Its location, you got to understand the location of it too, which figures into the housing piece. This building is kind of the, the axial terminus of a mall that runs from Moschul Parkway to this site. That mall is kind of peopled by academic buildings, Lehman College, Bronx Science. This is, this is kind of the, the mall of the Bronx in a way. It, it has, it's an axial development of low scaled buildings that have lots of landscaping. And this is the apex of it. This is the terminus. So it's a very, very important building from an urbanistic perspective. And those considerations also, I think, render that the approach that the applicant has taken to be generally quite appropriate, specifically. I think that the, you know, there's no question that the preservation proposed for the building is wonderful and appropriate. I think the applicant will work with staff carefully on maintaining the brick and the grout and minimizing the amount of replacement brick that's needed. When you're cutting these holes for the new openings, which I think are appropriate, I think it's very important that the applicant work with staff on the, the nature of the cut. Is this going to be a return brick? Is there going to be some kind of steel plate or a metal plate? How, how deep are the, are the planes of glass inset? And I think the monumentality of the building argues for a robust, careful, dramatic way to make these openings. The sheer mass of the building will dictate it in a way. So I think the applicant should work with staff on that, developing details that seek to minimize the amount of brick replacement because you'll never get a good match and that's right where you're going to be experiencing it. I think that the removal of the wrought iron above grade is, is totally appropriate. Keeping it below the water table is perfect because that's really where people will experience it. So there'll be still a sense of that medieval, you know, battlements, cage, all that S and M E kind of imagery, very, very appropriate to this building, very, very nice and it'll still be there. The applicant might want to retain the removed wrought iron on site, if that's possible. I think that the signage, I don't, I don't recall a time when the Victorian Society indicated that there wasn't enough signage on a building. They might be right, and I think that we'll certainly be, be flexible with them if they want more. It is a remarkably modest signage package for a building of this nature with this kind of program. So, you know, I, I certainly think that more could be done, but what is proposed is, is totally fine. I think that the modification of the roof to create more insulation is barely noticeable. Again, the scale of this is just so nuts that when you add nearly, you know, I don't know, eight inches of thickness to the roof, you can't even see it. So it's, the battens on the roof are six inches tall. It's, it's just an insanely big building. The curtain wall modifications are great. The curtain wall modifications are very important. You're going to experience this building from the number six train, which runs right by it. And the train runs almost exactly at the height of the glass. So it's a really, it's really going to be a total change in the way that this building is experienced by the city. So I think that the curtain wall is great. I think the other opening modifications around the perimeter at the storefronts, very important. The, the store, the, the need to activate, the, the need to activate the, the street along Jerome Avenue is critical. So the introduction of storefronts there interspersed with openings is totally appropriate. The apartment buildings. The apartment buildings are, I think, also appropriately masked. I think that their central axis works with that kind of mall axis line. I would have liked there to be more visibility between the two pieces of the building, perhaps to allow for views of the, of the towers from a distance, if that's, if that was practical. But I think it's okay as is. Terms of the bridge, I think the bridge could have been higher. I think as long as it didn't match, didn't, didn't, didn't go above the, the base height of, of the brick, I think it could have been higher. The design of the buildings, I don't think these buildings, because they're 20 feet away from this monstrous building, could be seen as part of the city. I think they are, you know, I mean, you would think about them again, in the context of that mall, they're the tallest buildings on that mall until you get to Moschul Parkway, where you have, you know, Paul Rudolph, 30 stories, whatever it is. So these are going to be tall, outstanding, very visible new buildings on a landmark site. So I think from that perspective, I think that their general symmetry is a good idea. I think that the, they should be symmetrical. They, they do have this kind of slightly asymmetrical top to them. I think that that should be examined. I think the symmetry is kind of part of the deal here. It's part of the relation to the building and the, the, the way that the, the headhouse and the, the building kind of related to that, that whole urban experience. So I think that, that they could go higher on the one building where it's kind of lower so that they're all the same height. But I think symmetry is worth more than a modest reduction in height of one of the two buildings. I think that architecturally, I don't think the brick fade idea feels resonant here. I think the massiveness of the, of the armory is, is, should, you know, I think that the connection between the armory and the apartment buildings is, is there by mass. So don't try to make it go away by making it into a background building. Make, tie the buildings together more. And that might be with a solid brick, that might be with varying window openings or something. I think that just tying the building together with the armory will make it more successful a project. But I think it's, I think that all those things can be done with staff. This is just a advisory opinion anyway, if I'm not mistaken. So I think that they have a long road to hoe, but I think that that should be considered.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarity, we have a binding jurisdiction on this. It is going to city planning, of course, but we, because it is primarily concerned, the work is primarily concerning an individual landmark, we have binding jurisdiction and the Public Design Commission won't be reviewing it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mann.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldblum, for the clarifying comments about the scale and, and relationships in the neighborhood. That was very helpful. It's a great project. Kudos to the entire team. You know, I echo everything others have said about the difficulty of adaptive reuse, the importance of, of making this happen, and what an exciting project this is. I mean, this is an entire, you know, entertainment neighborhood inside a, a single building, an entire community inside a single building. And so how you do that while, you know, preserving and restoring the building is incredibly complex and, and important. I do think it's, it's generally approvable and I think that's because the big moves are right. So, you know, the, the roof, you know, is right, the end walls are right, you know, the additional insulation and it's maintaining its relationships, looking behind the parapet is, is well conceived. I find the, the, the public realm surrounding the building to be well conceived. In terms of the new building, I agree with the comments about mass as opposed to, to height, and I find it to be appropriate. I don't find it to be too tall. I would have appreciated a true street view, the, the street eye level view that we have of the building. It's not a, a view that could be had, given the width of the street and what's immediately adjacent to it. It's actually a quite a res, a beautiful street on the north side, tree lined and, you know, pedestrian scaled. But nonetheless, I think that the scale of the building is good and in general, all the big moves are right. I think there are a few things that could be worked on with staff. You know, that's, I think what makes it approvable and is a good place to be, is that the big moves are right, but as we cut down to the details, presentation and the resolution of the design became a bit fuzzier, to be honest. I found the storefront detail to be a bit lacking, a bit too simple perhaps, to hold up to the robust character of the building. I personally find, I don't know if others do, but I find the, the height of the storefronts in this image in particular, the upper datum, to have a awkward relationship with the barbasins. I learned a new word as well, thank you. With the bottom of them a kind of almost, but not quite aligned. I think it could be better if the storefronts were lower and so they stayed free of the kind of water line struck by the bottom of the barbasins. But these are details that can be worked on with, with staff. I find the removal of the bar grills, so long as they're kept below the, you know, at the basement level to be fine, I find that appropriate. I took a little bit of issue with the northeast corner of the project. I found the argument that the barbasins turn the corner and therefore define the volume of the armory to be so compelling, too compelling, that then that wasn't actually executed on one of the two corners for which it's possible to do so. So I think that could be thought about a bit further with staff. I understand the need to activate that, that corner for, for retail, but perhaps it doesn't need to be quite so high. But I think those are details that can be worked on. Overall, it's, it's a really great project. It should be celebrated. I'll show off a lot more of the kind of great activity that's going to happen on the inside and the way that people are going to be drawn to this building. I think, you know, this creation of an entire district inside a building is incredibly exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder.
I think I was ready. Thank you. To echo the sentiments of previous commissioners, I think it is a wonderful project, good example of adaptive reuse, especially, I love the focus on like this, I think you mentioned the living room for the community, reflecting kind of the activities that are happening around the space. I think it makes it a much more desirable place than it probably may have been recently. And maybe an afterthought, as, as massive as it is, it was probably, was waiting, someone was waiting for it to become something. And so I think you guys have done a pretty good job on reimagining what that could be. To get into some of the details, I think the, the storefronts or the entrances, they do, they do kind of fall flat for me. I don't think, I think, I think there can be some more work done to kind of reflect the level of detail with the rest of the building that's, that's naturally there and also that you've put in other places, like the roof. Like it's, it's clear where you guys really focused on and some areas you probably need to focus on a little more. I think you guys that are, again, thinking about community, I think you did a good job in being thoughtful about accessibility and how people universally entered and exited the building throughout the space. I thought, I thought something that was really cool was the way you guys incorporated the mechanical units. I, I think that was kind of understated as, 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 you don't even think about it, like going through the presentation, you, you kind of forget that those things are needed. And you guys made it so that we can forget that they're there, but it still allows the building to, to function, assuming, assuming they work. And to get to the, to the resident, residential building, because I think that's the kind of elephant in the room, which was really interesting to look at. I don't, I don't know if, I don't necessarily have a problem with the height because I also recognize that lowering the height doesn't necessarily allow you to see the, the building, right? Unless it's low enough where the, the numbers don't even work. So being able to get it at this height and then understanding, I think it's still difficult to understand how large the armory is. And I think some of the pictures really helped, especially the sightline images and just seeing it from, from distances where you can't really see it from the other side. I think my, my concern was mostly on the north side where you're facing the residential building and with the armory behind it. I, I would love to know what the community thinks or thought about seeing that side and being, being that this residential building is, is blocking it and kind of to Commissioner Goldblum's point about how it's designed around the entire, the entire building, now that's kind of cut off. And I understand that it's, it's impossible to see all of that, but it would be interesting to know how they feel, which I think takes me to the point of where can we add some sort of transparency or some visible connection, just directly straight on. I recognize you guys kind of did it from the corners, but even at the corners, it's only really one angle. The way you, the way you angle the building, it cuts it off if I'm at the center of that building, being able to see those corners. And so I think it brings into question the bridge. I initially thought about it being raised so at least I could see more of that, the lower half of the building. But I'm not sure how that, how that works. I think you guys should maybe look at, I'm sure you looked at it, but maybe there's more ways to just provide some more visual connection on that, on the north side of the building. I love what you did with the curtain wall at the sides. I think that's probably the, one of the bigger winning pieces of this, of this project in terms of transformation of the project. of the project. And yeah, I think for the most part, I think that that's it, aside from everything else that's been said. But yeah, I do, I think it is, I think it is a good project and it is appropriate. And just like work on those things that I think you guys probably know where you need to put more work in. And so for that, I think it's appropriate.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Quinbe.
Overall, I appreciate the thought that went into the design itself. I would say at the primary and secondary levels, a lot of things were resolved. I think we're in the tertiary, which is kind of more with some of the specific details need to be worked out a bit. And as was said by many people already, that can be done at the staff level. I have walked past this building, around it several times. It's huge. I don't think anyone really understands how large it really is. That being the case, the proposed housing, I don't have an issue with its scale. It's, I believe it's fine. I guess the only concern I do have, which was stated prior, is the bridge connecting the two buildings. I think that should be revisited. But I believe that some resolution can actually come from that. Again, I like to say, I appreciate all the effort that was put into this project.
On the bridge, is it the presence of the bridge or the design of the bridge or the height of the bridge?
It's probably all three of those. It really needs to be reexamined and what goal is really trying to be achieved.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Master.
Yeah, this is, this is an incredible, incredible project. The scale of it, the fact that this building has been vacant for 30 years and that we've had two projects, two proposals here that have failed. The fact that we have this before us now, you know, with the event planning, with the event space, with the community space, and then the affordable housing component, I think, I think it's tremendous. First of all, I think it's appropriate to demo the two non-contributing buildings and the stair enclosure. I think that the scale and the massing of the new apartment, the affordable housing piece is appropriate. They have not used all of their FAR because they wanted to, I think, put a little design element in it and to make the armory kind of show through. So I can find that the design is appropriate. I think that from the front of the armory, they showed us pictures that you actually cannot see this residential building, and I think that's pretty incredible. Of course, it is visible from other viewpoints. However, given that the neighborhood has other apartment buildings, I feel that it does blend in with the cityscape of the neighborhood well, and it doesn't compete with the armory. The new openings for doors and windows in the armory building itself, I think are appropriate, and they've demonstrated why they're necessary. The signage, the blade signs, the banners, and the dimensional letters, as people have said, are very minimal and given the scale of the building. So I think they're appropriate. And then the roof in terms of the material, the skylights, the solar panels and the curtain wall, all of that is appropriate. The only comment that I have, so before I say anything about that, let me talk about the bridge. I understand that they, that the designer wanted to connect the two residential buildings in a way. I understand that some of the other commissioners feel that it blocks the view. I'm actually okay with the bridge as it is because I still think that you can see from the street, you can still see through to the armory, and it kind of provides more of a, I think it kind of ties everything together. So I kind of understand what they're saying. So I'm actually okay with the bridge as presented. My only suggestion is that the applicant work with staff in terms of positioning the bollards and then also to refine the storefront infill details. Other than that, I think it's a great project and you guys did a great job.
Commissioner Jefferson.
A marvelously thought-through project, and I agree with mostly all the comments that have been made by our fellow commissioners. I was really happy when the architect said that their concept was of light, bringing light into the interior of this huge space. And I thought the methanene level was really a kind of a brilliant concept between the two. I just want to make them aware that this is a huge space, so light coming in has to be able to penetrate that methanene level. And they should give that some thought, but that's not what we're here for. So I'll put that aside. I think the the thinking of the building, the technical issues are very well handled. The apartment building, it's a linear building, it's a mass, it's a linear building. And they rightly thought, we have to break it in half. But I think they should have broken it into smaller pieces so that as you walk this long block, you got glimpses of pieces of the historic building in back. And as you come along, it's a huge block. It's, you know, you walk across the street, you could get glimpses of it, and you could put multiple bridges. Instead of having this massive building that's broken up again into pieces, that really doesn't do anything really, the corner idea, cutting the corner, it's okay. It makes you see the corner better. But as you walk along and you turn and you look and you see this fabric, that would be a nice thing. So those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, just want to say what an incredible, exciting project this is. It is very rare in New York City, not just for the Bronx, for, to have a space to come together and have the flexibility for communal gathering and do it all under one roof. And I think that has been said that, you know, the multiple false starts and attempts on this thing. So I really hope that this project succeeds, given the thing they need. And it's a humongous building. It is, you know, it is huge, and that's what gives us the excitement. And so in terms of the massing, I would just say, talk about, you know, some, the testimony talk about whether it's the scale or the tallness or the thing. The one thing I would say about the housing in the back is that a lot of times when we see affordable housing, because we want to maintain the cost low, we tend to treat it as a very monolithic facade in the back, meaning on the reservoir side. I will encourage the applicant, given the very nice design, to see whether you can bring, because this building is so horizontal. If you look at it, there's a horizontality to it. And on the back of it, on the housing side, you may want to introduce a horizontal element to it, and that will not affect the cost that much, but it really breaks the massing in terms of dressing that. So that's why my suggestion toward the back does what struck me. The other thing is talk about the massive gathering, you know, 17,000 people or more wanting to come through. My concern is a little bit, given the practicality of the entrances, you may need to make it the corner even larger. The space coming in and out, and that, I leave it up to you to see the, I thought the elevator in the center, see if you can find an alternate use, you know, I think the seven feet to go in for that space, that's just minor. The other thing is the landscaping, I think, I think, and the storefront, I think Commissioner Mens is correct in the datum, that one thing that if you look at both the interior and outside, is that there's almost two treatment. One is the outside and one is the inside, that the, but in both instances is, what struck me was how nicely you have done this additional level, doubling the space for the, for the drill space. But the storefront and the interior and outside storefront and the design of the signage will make, differentiate the space. And I think that's the area to pay attention to. The landscaping, I mean, I think that you know, really is, you know, we will really give you the space and the look, and I'd love to see what the, and Commissioner Goldblum alert to try to preserve to the least amount of damage to the existing brick. And this is your point about, you know, do you need the size of the punch opening to be as big as it is? And so those are just some of my initial observations.
Okay.
But it's a very lovely project.
All right, great, great. I thank you all commissioners for this really good discussion. And I think where we are is we generally support the project and we do have some suggestions on details, many of which I think can be resolved at the staff level. And so, and I know you're on a clock at this point as well, going through the City Planning Commission. So what I would suggest commissioners and Commissioner Goldblum, I'll ask you to read the motion, is that we make, we, a motion to approve the project today with the condition that they continue to work with the staff on the proportions and details of the storefronts, the brick details also associated with those openings, the final details for the signage and, and in thinking about the proportions of the storefronts, thinking about that northeast corner. So it's really the proportions and details of the storefronts and details for the signage and the brickwork. And then for the new building, I think we, there are some suggestions that were made here that can be resolved with staff, I think, addressing the symmetry of the design and the final materials and details, which could include adding maybe a horizontal element as Commissioner Chen suggested. So resolving final materials and details of the new building, the, addressing the symmetry and addressing opportunities for views to the armory from the side. And I think we can start there and they can work with the staff. And then if the changes result in something that is a more significant design change, particularly I'm thinking at the bridge or breaking up the massing into smaller parts, they can come back to a public meeting for that in the future, but this would at least get them to advance. So it'll be.
What am I saying specifically about the bridge per se?
So I think for now, it's, you're going to be saying re-studying the bridge and the views to the building.
Got it, okay. Regarding the Kingsbridge Armory, an individual landmark, the application is to demolish ancillary buildings on the site and construct a new building. And at the armory building, alter and create masonry openings, replace windows and roofing, and add and remove ironwork, install solar panels, louvers, signage, and canopies, and perform site work and landscaping. I note that the Kingsbridge Armory occupies a full city block adjacent to an elevated subway line, and that the building's primary design facades are located along the West Kingsbridge Road, Reservoir Avenue, and Jerome Avenue's, with critical loading and functional uses located at Reservoir Avenue and with a simpler secondary facade at West 195th Street. I also note that there is a scope of restorative work, including but not limited to recreating missing turret elements and a finial, which will be reviewed at staff level. I recommend that we issue a positive report with the following stipulations, finding that the two existing National Guard buildings and the stair addition at the northeast corner of the site are not original to the armory building and are not features for which the site was designated. Therefore, demolishing these buildings will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the individual landmark. That the proposed new residential building will be located on the rear portion of the individual landmark lot, which fronts on West 195th Street, and therefore, the primary reading and views of the historic building as seen from the southwest and east will not be diminished or blocked. And that the new building is well scaled to the armory and will only be partially visible in conjunction with the primary design facades from longer viewpoints. That the new building will provide a setback from the armory building above the ground floor and will incorporate angled ends and a gap in the center that preserves the views and a reading of the armory building's massing. And the varied forms and composition of its massing will break down the scale of the new building in deference to the armory building. And that the design and materials of the new building, featuring red and gray brickwork, gray metal paneling, gray aluminum windows, entrances and storefronts, and a simple repetitive detailing, is referential to the color palette of the armory while maintaining a level of articulation, which will set the new buildings apart from the armory as a clearly contemporary development without competing with the significant architectural features of this historic building. With regard to the armory work at this, with regard to the work at the armory building, I recommend approval with considerations, finding that the removal of the corrugated plastic infill at the east and west ends of the drill hall and replacement of the roofing and fascia will not eliminate any significant historic fabric and will restore the transparency of these monumental window assemblies, that the portions and fenestration pattern of the proposed glazing system will be a simplified version of the multi-light fenestration seen in historic photographs and will relate to the interior truss structure, that the dimensional increase for the added insulation of the barrel roof and drill hall is necessary to address energy code requirements and retain the curved shape of the roof and legibility of the copper clad ribs, and will be perceptible, will be, I'm sorry, and will require only minimal, right, the adjustments to the metal fascia at the gable ends, that these changes will not be perceptible from the public thoroughfare, that the proposed skylights at the monitor roof will relate to the interior truss structure and allow light into the massive interior space, and that the solar panels at the south slope of the roof, of the monitor roof, will be closely mounted to the roof, and that these installations will be only minimally and seasonally visible from longer views to the south, thereby preserving the profile of the roof slope, that the lower portions of the Reservoir Avenue facade has a variety of large-scale utilitarian openings that were added over time. Therefore, the proposed modifications to these openings and additional openings are in keeping with the facade's development, that the number and size of new openings throughout the building's base, featuring either simple aluminum or in glass infill or flat metal doors with dark red finish and glass and metal marquees above selected openings, will not overwhelm or diminish the solidity of the base while facilitating safe egress through the site, and the infill will read as contemporary insertions, supporting the adaptive reuse of the building for modern needs. That the lintels of these new openings and the marquees fall below the historic building elements such as terracotta band and corbeled brickwork and projecting turrets. Therefore, they will not obscure or detract from these significant features. That the historic ironwork at the doors and select historic doors will be fixed in the open positions, preserving these significant features, that the proposed multi-light aluminum simulated double hung and fixed windows and transoms will recall the historic wood windows in terms of configuration and finish and will allow for the increased soundproofing and energy efficiency, and will not detract from the special character of the building and regular patterns of masonry openings. That the proposed metal picket railings at the headhouse will be simple in design and consistent with the presence of ironwork found throughout the historic building. That the mechanical interventions will be limited to the north side of the armory and will be largely concealed by the new building. The enlarged louvers at the drill hall roof will be curved to retain the roof profile and the clearest story louvers will feature muntens to simulate the multi-light windows. Therefore, these interventions will not call undue attention to themselves. That the proposed banner signs at the interior of the drill hall windows and at the headhouse are in keeping with the building's military architecture and history and will not damage the historic building. That the projecting fabric blade signs mounted at areas of flat masonry will only be installed at the corners of the armory above the entrances and will relate to the heights of existing window openings and will not project farther than the current adjacent turrets, thereby helping them to fit within the context of the significant architectural features without detracting from those features. That the freestanding sign on West Kingsbridge Road is well placed within the landscape and will not obscure any significant architectural features of the building, that the installation of digital signage with both static and changing information on Jerome Avenue facade, consisting of four poster boxes with digital screens, two digital screens at the inside of the infill glass, are modern versions of signage typically found at buildings used for entertainment purposes and public gatherings and will be of modest scale and will not call undue attention to themselves. That the proposed metal dimensional lettering mounted to the glass That the proposed metal dimensional lettering mounted to the glass infill will be minimal and well scaled to the modern infill. That the overall signage program and number of signage types will not overwhelm this large building as a whole when seen from public thoroughfares and will support its adaptive reuse. The removal of simple historic perimeter picket fencing will facilitate the use of the individual landmark and limited portions of the fence will be relocated and reused on site, thereby retaining some historic fabric. That the proposed landscape and hardscape plan retaining mature trees, creating plazas, installing paving, barrier free access ramps, raised planters, other street furniture will facilitate the use of the outdoor areas as community gathering spaces, will support the adaptive reuse of the building on the site and will not detract from the monumental building. That the shades, metal shade structure, ramps, seating, built in elements will be modern, low scale installations that will not obscure views of the historic building or significant features. That the cumulative effect of the proposed work will result in an adaptive reuse for this long vacant Armory Building and is supportive of its long term preservation without detracting from the individual landmark. We also recommend that the applicant work with staff to explore the following details. One, the detailing of the storefront openings and new door openings at the lower level, specifically concentrating on the depth placement detailing of the openings, the material and detail used for the storefronts and how that material meets the ground. Also exploring the relative height of those openings in relationship to the adjacent decorative features of the existing building. Two, exploring the relationship of the new building to the existing building, specifically regarding the possibility of making the two buildings symmetrical, increasing the views from the north to the Armory landmark through the buildings between the two buildings. And that this consideration may involve reconsiderations of the bridge's height, width, placement or, and design. What else did I miss?
And that the final materials and details be submitted.
And that the, all right, and that the third thing related to the existing building is that the.
That's the new building.
Sorry, the new building is that the details and materials and articulations be examined with staff for their compatibility with the landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Aye.
Mayor Goldblum.
Aye.
Mayor Quembe.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Mayhan.
Aye.
Master.
Aye.
Wilder.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved and please continue to work with the staff as you develop those details and good luck in your next step in the process. Thank you. And we'll now move to our public meeting agenda.
Right, we have one public meeting item, item number one, LPC 25-09619. This is an application for a binding report in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1, Lot 111, Governor's Island Building 19 in the Governor's Island Historic District. This is a Victorian vernacular style officer's quarters designed by the officer of the quartermaster general and built in 1891 and altered in 1902. The application is to modify entrances and install windows, decks, a barrier free access ramp, steps and entry canopy and site features. This was last presented at the public hearing of May 6, 2025, and no action was taken at that time. The applicant will present revisions to the proposal in response to your comments after we open the proceedings.
All right, and we'll open the proceedings now so that the applicant may speak. Commissioner Quembe, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Some of.
Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
No, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, you may begin.
Can you hear me? Right, you're good, okay. So my name is Andrew Miller, I'm the project manager from Jacklitz Garner. We're the architects for this project. I'm here with Hillary Zao from the Trust of Governor's Island as well. This project was presented previously on May 6, so we're just going to focus on the revisions that we've done per the commission's comments. And so just to run through the summary slide, we've made adjustments to the ADA ramp and the railing details, which we'll go into more detail. We have also updated the porch and maintained certain elements of it in response to the comments. We have also repurposed, we've also removed areas of repurposed seawall per the commission's comments. Also, the rear deck awning, we've updated that detailing per the comments. And also, lastly, the HVAC enclosure and window louver details, we've also made some adjustments to that. Moving on to the slide, our proposed revised site plan is the larger one on the right. In the lower left corner is the previous version. The changes we've made per the comments have been to reduce the eastern stairs that go to the Nolan Park Common to one bay. They basically were covering two column bays in the previous version, so we've reduced that. And you'll see more of that in the elevation. The, also the other big change to the site plan has been the removal of the, one of the accessible ramps, the one at the west side going towards Evans Road. This is the east elevation and you can see in the lower right corner our updated elevation where we have just, the stairs only go across one bay, which maintains more of the character of the porch as it exists today. This is the south elevation, per the commission's comments. We've maintained the porch railing across the south facade. We've also eliminated some tiered seating that was also planned for that side so that this porch reads as a wraparound porch on the side of the building. I should also mention very briefly, the HVAC enclosure was also updated and you could see this in the west elevation. We updated the detailing of this from larger concrete board slats to be clapboard that's scaled in size to match the exterior facade of the building. This is the west elevation. We have updated the awning detailing to remove the tiebacks. Previously it was cantilevered with those tiebacks, now we are showing a post and beam construction supporting it. And we've also more faithfully represented the louvered opening at the third floor, which would be in an existing opening. Additionally, we've removed the sea stone, which was at the perimeter of the deck. We now have proposed wood steps and going down to grade. North elevation and what we've done here is we've updated the detailing of the ramp to match closer to Building 20, the adjacent building with pickets that would match the detailing of that ramp. Also, and I should mention, you see this in this slide and the previous slide, we have updated the coloring of the main entry doors from the previous pink to a red. I know that was quick, but we wanted to just basically focus on those revisions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chen.
Just a minor one, why the color red?
There's nothing so specific about the color, and we want to work with staff on the color. If there's any further comments, basically each building would get its own colored door. So the previous building had a blue one, this would have red. And then we would continue that strategy going down.
I thank you, Commissioner Goldblum.
Because I guess we didn't like pink is the answer to the question. But, so the AC, were you not able to move it at all? Couldn't be any further away from the building?
No, because there's limitations to how far we can locate the condenser from the building.
Okay, and the columns and fascia that create the rear yard porch are shown in a natural wood color, is that the intention?
Yes.
And the reason for the choice of natural wood, was it to differentiate, what was the purpose of that choice?
Exactly. Per the Secretary of Interior Standards, we wanted to differentiate new elements from the existing.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, so we're going to move to our discussion. I'll note that the Victorian Society of New York submitted a letter which was shared with the commissioners prior to today's public meeting. And we're going to pull the drawing, the presentation back up in a minute. But the last time we saw this, and this is one of the houses on Nolan Park, the wood frame houses. And we have seen a few different applications to reuse these buildings. So over time, they are starting to get new uses, which is wonderful. And we have had to address things like mechanical equipment and ADA ramps and have done so so far. And so in this particular proposal, we saw, when we saw it the last time, there were changes to the porch stairs and removal of porch railings, the ramp on the side. And then a lot of the big moves at the back where they were removing non-contributing sort of accretions and creating a sort of a more of a public space where they had a kind of a stone platform and large openings, a covered canopy and pink doors. And at the public meeting, we had asked them to try to save more of the railings and not extend both stairs. So the applicants came back today, they are now keeping the stairs as they exist and as they existed historically and keeping the railings. They are, they modified some details to the ramp in response to our comments. And then at the back, also in response to our comments, they have changed the color from pink to red to sort of still stand out for their use and try and, and sort of express some individuality there. And they have changed the materiality at the base and they're no longer using the big heavy stones that we were uncomfortable with. And the canopy, and I don't know, Stephen, if we can get that up, but. So I think, and then the mechanical equipment is unfortunately, we asked them to explore the location and the size and the screening requirement, and it is sort of what it is, but they have changed some of the detailing, I think, of the screening. So they have addressed each aspects. Oh yeah, I think they were also, the two windows at the top were drawn incorrectly last time. So this is actually how they are now and how they're going to be in the future, just with the louver and the one opening, but the sizes remain as they are now. So Commissioner Chen, would you take this one? I think not everybody was here last time.
Yeah, I think you summarized very well. I think this is, the applicant was very responsive to the request by the commissioners. And I'm glad the, as Commissioner Goldblum pointed out, the color pink has been modified. I can find this appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
I like the pink, but here you go. No, I think in general it's appropriate. I think the applicant should work with the staff on the colors and the choice of the blue and the red. Just look at that in context with what else is going on in the other houses. And it's nice to have the identifying color and to have a little bit of a bright pop, I think that's totally fine. I just think that, you know, look at it, look at it from an overarching perspective and I'm sure the staff will keep it, keep it good.
Commissioner Jefferson.
They, they have resolved all the issues.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, it looks like the applicant was very responsive, keeping a lot of the railings, modifying the ADA with the enclosure for the HVAC system. I can find this appropriate.
All right, and Commissioner Quembe, I don't think you were here when we initially saw this. But the, on the front, as I said, they're now keeping the railing. They've modified the ramp slightly to add some more pickets. On the back, they had a boulder vision with a big stone platform and a metal and glass canopy and and the pink pop-up color. So that in response to our comments, they have toned it down and used more natural materials. Based on what you see now and then the discussion so far, are you comfortable with this? Okay. Thank you, and Commissioner Wilder.
Yeah, I find it appropriate.
Okay, so I, thank you for your responsiveness and coming back quickly. And I'm, and I think they have resolved the issues we had. So Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion to approve it? And then would you also just add that they should work with the staff on final review and approval of the color samples? Thanks.
In a matter of LPC 25-09619, Governor's Island Building 19, Governor's Island Historic District. The, it is a Victorian vernacular style officer's quarters designated by the officer quartermaster general and built in 1891 and altered in 1902. The application is to modify the entrances and install windows, decks and a barrier free access ramp, steps and entry canopy and site features. I recommend approval. Let me rephrase it. Noting the building's style, scale, materials and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Governor's Island Historic District, also noting that the house was altered in 1903, prior to 1950 and again in 1991. I recommend that a positive report be issued, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the existing garage abutting, the house was constructed at the mid 20th century and is not a significant architectural historic feature. Therefore, its demolition will bring the house closer to its original appearance and form. That the proposed work at the porches will restore certain architectural features while providing additional access and gathering spaces that enhance and support the overall activation of Nolan Park and the surrounding streetscape. That the introduction of a metal roof canopy on wood posts and beam and the wood deck at the western side of the house will enhance the ability to provide outdoor programming and the design and materials of these features relate well to the residential character of the house and the maritime character of Governor's Island. That the proposed entrance modifications, including installing new wood and glass entry door at the northwest and southeast portions of the porch and in tripartite assemblies at the two modified west porch entrances will be in keeping with a variety of entrances and entry doors found at buildings within Nolan Park. And the new entry doors will be simply designed and well scaled to the openings. That the proposed red finish at the new entry doors on the west elevation will add a pop of color within the otherwise neutral palette and its location at the rear under a canopy will prevent the bright color from calling undue attention to itself. That the proposed modification to existing brick pathwork and pathways and driveways, including widening the approaches from the Nolan Park pedestrian pathway and installing a new ramp at the existing pedestrian pathway along the north portion of the yard will allow the barrier free access and multiple entrances to the building. That the metal pickets of the ramp reflect another commission approved ramp and neighboring house and relate well to the pickets of the porch in a contemporary way. That a new below gray cellar access stair and pathway will provide egress as required by COE and will not be readily perceptible from public thoroughfares. That the proposed mechanical units will be located at the yard, at the southwest facade, at the back of the house, obscured by new gray cement board screening and therefore will not call undue attention to itself. And that the proposed work to supportive, is supportive of the adaptive reuse of the building and the reactivation of the Governor's Island Historic District. I also note that the applicant should work with the staff to coordinate the colors.
And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote? And I'll just note for the record that Commissioner Mayhan is recused on this item.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Gone. Gone, I think. Yeah.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Inquembe?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Master?
Aye.
Mr. Wilder?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the, back to our public hearing agenda to item number two.
Public hearing item number two is LPC 25-11563, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 2090, Lot 35, 202 Adelphi Street in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an altered Italianate-style rowhouse built circa 1860. The application is to modify and replace windows, install a cornice, ironwork stoop and bay window, modify a wall, and construct a rear yard addition carport and bike enclosure.
I just want to make sure that I can work to advance. Is it here? Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Shakespeare. I'm a principal at the firm Shakespeare Gordon Studio. And today we'll be talking to you about this project at, in the Fort Greene Historic District. So it's a full, just big picture, it's a full interior and exterior renovation and restoration of this house. It's located on a corner property at the corner of Adelphi and Willoughby, Willoughby Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. So the house, we'll come back to these photos, but you can see at the lower right, the house was a rather charming two-and-a-half-story house with an ornamental cast-iron front porch, stoop, Oriole window facing Willoughby. This photo is the tax photo, obviously, from around 1940. That is no longer what the house looks like today. The house in 1941, per the CIO, was converted into a four-family house where they took off, they fully built out the top story, they removed the front porch Oriole window, and they relocated the entry to the ground floor. So that second photo from the right is from the 1970s, which was a window we were able to get from landmarks and sort of shows what happened to the house. The next two photos are from the 1980s tax photo and then the current condition at the left. Just to orient us a bit further, we have, the house is located at the edge of the Historic District on Willoughby Avenue and is a trapezoid-shaped lot. So it faces orthogonally on Willoughby and sort of moves away from the property line at Willoughby. It, if you look at the Sanborn maps, the second row from the top, it basically shows, it shows up in 1860s. And then by around 1913, they built a small garage in the back, which is in the back inner corner. And then around, before, sometime before 1938, moved the garage up to the street. So there's a curb cut for that that still exists. Sometime in the 2000s, there, there was a permit pulled to demolish something, and we believe that was when they took down the garage. People still park there. There's a curb cut and gate, but there's no longer a garage. So here are some photos going around the house today. There's not a whole lot from the original house that's still there. I'll show you, there's a couple elements we'll come to again later. But you can see the Willoughby side at the lower right and then moving around the house, ultimately with the, the rear facade, which you can see pretty well from Willoughby because there's only two houses. There's a house at the, our house at the corner of Willoughby and Adelphi. And then there's another house, our sort of sister house at Willoughby and Carlton, but no house, other houses along, along Willoughby there. There is a solid concrete block wall, however. So here's a couple sightlines. Just quickly, we're not proposing extensive work on the roof, mostly work that we'll be dealing with, with, at staff level, because it's minimally visible. Sorry, there's a bug. So we're proposing an operable glass skylight, and we're working with the DOB. Under the 1938 code, we believe we do not have to build a bulkhead, even though the house is four stories. And we'll be proposing solar panels, low. But in the fire department access, where we are going to have space for the owners to use for recreation, so that is why we're also proposing a safety railing. There's currently a safety railing there, so we're trying to rebuild it in a lighter way with the stainless steel frame and wire mesh infill, which we think is the lightest thing to be seen against the sky. But it should not be visible from the Adelphi Street facade because it's set back from the cor, the new cornice that we're proposing. But it will be visible, and we'll show you some 3Ds from the Willoughby side and from the rear. So here's a plan of the block. We're, on this plan, north is to the left, and the house is at the top left of that floor plan. You can see that all the sort of light purple are, blocks are the extensions that exist on the block. We are also proposing a small two-story extension, that's six foot, eight feet deep, only to line up with the three adjacent properties, two-story extensions, and we'll come back to that. The character of the block overall is almost all Italianate-style, but the houses do vary in height. They're almost all three stories over a basement, but those really vary in scale. There's also a church renovation, which I think you've seen recently on our block. And most of the properties have a more sort of either brick or fully brownstone clad or a rusticated brownstone base, you know, in the case of the brick ones, Italianate design. And that will be something we'll be talking about. And moving on here, zooming into the house, at the right, lower right, obviously, is what the house looked like. I wish that were the house we were given to renovate, but it is not. What we were given is the house at the lower left. The only two things that still exist from this original are the three, at the top left, three cast-iron lintels only at the second floor. All the other windows in the house have a flat lintel, either a brownstone flush lintel or no lintel at all visible. And then the, and two window bars at the ground basement level facing Willoughby. And zooming in on the site plan, so the things I'm going to talk about are, we are proposing a new front stoop, new Oriole window on the side, the six-foot, eight-deep rear addition I mentioned, a metal deck. We are trying to preserve an existing black locust tree that's on the site. And so we're building a bike shed in front of that and a carport. So here are three houses from the district that we've used as inspiration for our proposal. So we are, you know, I won't go into these extensively, but you can see there are brick houses with a rusticated brownstone base, brownstone stoop, cast-iron railings, flat brownstone lintels. We like this, we're very, we're interested in using entry doors like this with an arch around top, set in a rectangular opening, and then a projecting cornice. So here is our proposal. So the house, the drawing on the right is the existing condition, and the drawing on the left is our proposal for the Adelphi facade. So moving from the bottom up, we are proposing a new railing along the street, which is inspired by the historic design that had semicircular elements at the top and the bottom of the pickets, a new brownstone, simple rusticated base applied to the Adelphi side only, a new brownstone-clad stoop with metal railings, which you'll see in the side view, new round top wood entry doors, horizontal lintels, brownstone lintels, clad lintels on all windows, all new, all wood painted two-over-two windows throughout the house, and a new cornice. You can also see the railing at the top elevationally, which would not be visible like that from the street, but as I said, will be visible from other sides. The materials on the, on this facade, we just have painted materials, repointed brick and brownstone, which we'll work with landmarks on getting the brownstone color just right. As we move around the house, we also have some other materials. We're proposing a zinc cladding on our addition, which I have a sample here. It's a pre-patinated gray, grayish-green zinc. We have some bluestone elements at paving and a coping stone on that wall and some wood fencing and painted metal on the back. But here's the existing Willoughby Street side facade, which is also a primary facade. Not a lot of ornament there. There are some flush, some windows have flush lintels and sills, some have none. We, you can see clearly the existing railing that's up on the roof. You can see the concrete block wall along, you know, behind the house with two solid metal pedestrian car gates and a portion of chain link fence. So here are some houses from the neighborhood that were our inspiration for our design of our Willoughby facade. So the house on the lower right is our, what I call the sister house, which is directly behind us. And then there's two other houses included on that bottom row. So you can see there, they have clad the lowest story or the full facade in brownstone, but the brownstone does not turn the corner. It just sort of ends there at the corner. But it does have a band course above the basement level, which is something we'll be proposing. And also, they all have cornices that do not turn the corner and just sort of end facing, facing their smaller facades, side streets. The top photo is, just so you get a sense of what we're dealing with between the two houses. So the house behind us also has a solid concrete wall with a solid car gate, and they have a small carport, wooden carport there. So that's sort of what's directly behind us. And you can see our house on the left. Also, we're proposing a new Oriole window, so we walked around the neighborhood and looked at other Oriole windows in the neighborhood, and really, they're very eclectic. There are some that are angled, there are some that are rectangular, they're two-story, one-story, painted in different colors. We were also interested in some of the more contemporary interpretations, which you find the top two left, or the middle one is from the Clinton Hill Historic District, which is sort of the, probably the most unusual one we've seen. And then the one at the top left has a lot more glass. That's in the Cobble Hill Historic District. So it's not exactly what we're doing, but we thought it was interesting. So here's our proposed Willoughby elevation. So similarly to the front, we're doing a new low fence, more decorative semicircular design at the bottom. You can see the side of our stoop, which has a heavier interpretation of the new old post and railing. Over the brownstone, we have a gate, which I have details of that if people are interested, but it has a relating design with, but with a glass panel behind to sort of keep out some of the weather under the stoop. All new two-over-two wood, painted wood windows. And we're proposing the zinc, panelized zinc-clad Oriole window on the side, and then this rear addition, which you'll see the, on the, on the, you know, a couple slides ahead, what it looks like from the west, but here is what it looks like to the north. We're also, you can see the band course I mentioned above the basement level. We are proposing keeping the concrete block wall and recladding it with brownstone stucco and a bluestone coping stone and rebuilding the fences, still solid, with a solid backing, but with a picket design that's denser at the bottom, that picks up the line of the lower fence. And you can see, we're going to, we're proposing a sliding car gate, as opposed to a swinging car gate, that slides behind the fence. And then a carport, it looks solid here, but it's really fully open. It also has a zinc roof. And then beyond that, an elevation is our, is a bike shed, also clad in the zinc metal. And then turning to the rear facade, the top view is a view of our house on the left, which is deeper than its three wood frame neighbors. But they all, each have this similar, same depth rear extension. The one just next to us, the yellowish house, has a T porch design. The two, you know, further south from that have a more contemporary design with much more glazing. And so we're trying to sort of strike a balance between those two things. We're proposing, even though our house itself is deeper and has different floor levels, we're doing our best to line up, trying to do our best to line up with those, that addition. We were looking at the project on the lower left as a kind of inspiration for what we want to do with a generally solid addition with four bays of windows and set. And then the image at the lower right is not in New York City. It's in Cambridge, England, actually. But is, I, we included it because it shows an example of zinc. And while ours is a more panelized, we are proposing a zigzag texture with a one-inch center. And that is a slightly larger scale, but it was the best picture we could find of a similar project. So here's our proposal for the rear facade. Obviously, the fire escape will be coming off. The top two stories, we're just replacing the windows with our two-over-two windows, just in the existing openings. And there you can see the proposed addition. It does have a roof deck on the top, so there'll be a simple picket railing above that, and then this panelized zinc cladding. We're, again, our heights are different, but we're trying to line up as we can with adjacent construction. So we've created a sort of banding that picks up and aligns our window heights. We have patio doors out to a deck, but this image is sliced through the deck so that you can see the full elevation. Here's some renderings or photomontages of the existing on the left and our proposal on the right. This is from the corner of Adelphi and Willoughby. And then we have the view from the rear, looking, sort of looking east along Willoughby. And then we've included a number of details, so these are some details of the assembly of the addition. Sort of breaking down our panelized design. Likewise, similar, a similar design at the Oriole, proposed Oriole window. The new entry doors and overhanging brownstone, overhang with brackets. The cornice. And the carport design with the bike storage shed. And you can see that, that's actually the owner's car. And that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have questions on this one? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
Oh, this is a designer's question. So you're basically doing a restoration of the front facade. And it, why are you not, why are you not restoring the coping on the, on the Willoughby side? Since it's all basically restoration, what's the thinking behind not restoring it, as you see in the historic photo?
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't understand the question about coping. Can I go back to, do you want to see the rear facade? Which one?
In the historic photo, you see the cornice dropping around the corner.
Okay, let me go back to the.
Good, thanks.
A little delayed as I click through. Here.
There.
I'm sorry, I, I just didn't hear.
You see the cornice dropping around?
Oh, on the Willoughby side?
So you decided not to do it, and you showed it, you showed an example that, that existed, that didn't show it. But you didn't show the historic photo to make sure, you know, what was the thinking behind it? So the question I'm asking, you're doing a restoration. What made you not do that?
What made us not do it is that on houses more like where we're going with our design typically don't have them. It's more frequent, like here, obviously, they have the sloping, you know, attic story where they had it. But like, for instance, the house directly behind us doesn't have it. It doesn't turn the corner. So when you look at Willoughby and you see the two houses together, that house's cornice doesn't turn. And around the neighborhood, many, many houses on the corners, it doesn't turn. Some do, honestly, but more don't, I think. And we were most thought, thinking about the two houses sort of back to back.
Right. So I think, right, historically, the house was sort of two stories above a basement and then an attic store, story with a pitched roof and dormers. And at some point, that was raised and straightened out. So they no longer have that pitched roof and dormers. And so they are looking at other three-story and basement buildings in the neighborhood to inspire their design or inform their design. Okay, other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Goldblum?
How's the quality of the brick? I mean, obviously, they added to the height of the building. Is it all original? Is it all matching?
Not perfect, but it's not too bad, the addition. It's surprisingly okay in terms of matching. There are a few cracks at the very top where they built that addition that we're going to have to repair. And but we believe with the cleaning and repointing, we can keep all the, or almost all the brick intact. It really doesn't, you really don't, it doesn't jump out at you as a different color.
Right, okay. And second question. The one historic thing that, that's clinging here is the, are the lunettes over the, are the arched, arched lintels over the second floor windows? Why did you choose to remove them?
We chose to remove them because we would have to, to keep them. We would have had, we would have had to change a lot of other windows to have an arched lintel, which is a lot of work and also not, you know, it's a contemporary. And also not, you know, it's a contemporary design inside. And we really felt more inspired by a lot of the other houses around the neighborhood that had flat lentils. And since we had more windows that were flat and just those three that were arched, we went in the direction of flat. To change a lot of those window heads to arch would be a significant amount of work.
So you're thinking that, what you're saying, just to be perfectly clear, is that your belief is that if you were to retain the arches, it would look funny not to have the rest of the windows also have.
Absolutely.
Those arches.
I don't know that I've ever seen a property that has a mix of arched top windows and flat.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Wilder.
Quick question on the rear addition. Did you consider glazing at the Willoughby Avenue elevation?
We did a little bit. The floor plan, two things, the client has a desire for privacy. It's a very public street. And that would be that much more window, you know, facing people walking by. But also, there's a kitchen on the upper level, which isn't conducive to having windows on the side. And at the lower level, there's also cabinetry. So we prefer to not have windows there. That's just the client.
Okay, and just actually following up on that question, just on the, and understand why you'd want the solid side. But on the back, what in the plan is, if it's the plan, that is driving the proportion of that opening? I'm just thinking about you're relating it to porches, which maybe have a little more glazing on the back.
It is frankly, kitchen cabinets on both sides. Go back to that.
You mean the whiff at the back is the kitchen cabinet on either side? I see. Okay, I got it.
All right, other questions? Okay, we're going to move, yeah, Commissioner Chen, did you have a question?
Question for the staff. I mean, I think the mix of the linto windows versus the thing, I thought we had done it in the past, no?
I mean, there are historic rowhouse models that do mix, in some cases, straight lentils and arched lentils. Sometimes it's at the basement only, you might have arched windows. And then they're flat above, sometimes the top floor has them. It would be probably odd to have it in the middle. And that's the only location. But I do think there's a lot of variety in rowhouse style and architecture that would support different solutions here.
This is the question for the applicant. So given in that context, what difficulty would that present for you to install new windows around keeping the one dust in there?
I'm sorry, if we kept only at the second floor?
Yeah, right.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm going to go back to the facade. I don't think it would be technically difficult to do it in any way. I just think it would look a little bit of a Frankenstein facade, or if you had just the second floor, having arched lentils and everything else in the house being flat. And if you look at the existing facade today, you can kind of see what that looks like to a degree. Obviously, it doesn't have the stoop and the other restoration, so it's not exactly the same. But.
So the last.
Wouldn't be my preference.
Okay, so the last question pertains to the rear. The preference for zinc versus the more conventional traditional material? How is that arrived at?
Well, we like the sort of hundred-year nature of using a metal like zinc that will naturally patina, and if it gets scratched or damaged, well, you know, it'll never have to be repainted. So that is the primary reason. We have seen other metal-clad bays in New York City and Brooklyn, pressed metal bay windows. And we just really find that, just that idea that this material is real and not just a paint is really appealing. So it allows us to also create very crisp, you know, minimal, you know, flat details as opposed to using wood, which is sort of fatter. I don't know, I just think we really, we just, we just find it a beautiful material. I do, yeah, I've seen, you know, other projects in historic districts using it as roofs. And we think it's a beautiful material.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Corey.
Yeah, just a technical question to further the conversation about the lentils. To remove the cast iron lentils, you'd obviously have to do some structural work to take that out and put something else in its place. For the remaining openings on the front facade, are you actually keeping those lentils intact and doing sort of superficial appliques of the profiles you wish to add? Or are you also removing those other lentils and replacing them?
Well, currently, the house is occupied. Obviously, once we do demolition, we'll be able to see if any of them are damaged and have to be replaced. But generally, we're planning to keep all the existing lentils where we can. Hope they're presumably wood. And then only do a superficial, you know, new brownstone stucco lentils.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Master.
Yeah, on the rear yard addition, did you ever consider putting the side in brick rather than zinc? So that you have that continuity on the side facade?
Because it's two stories, I think we did look at that at one point. But we felt it was really preferable to keep the historic volume of the house visible. And we have actually set our addition off with a sort of very deep reveal where it's recessed by several inches. So no, I think it's nice to sort of show the separation between what's new and what's existing. If it had been a four-story addition, perhaps we would have considered that. But with a two-story addition, it felt a little bit like a dog leg in brick.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us, I assume, who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist. We ask you to state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District Council. HGC finds this proposal to be moving in the right direction, but we believe that it is stylistically confused as rendered. The rear facade is appropriate, but we would like to see a more coherent front facade that pursues an Italianate style. The remaining historic lentils and the arched windows on the second floor should be kept, and the new cornice should turn the corner into the north facade and run the length of Willoughby Avenue, just as the original cornice did. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Rosaria Sinisi. Ms. Sinisi, if you would please unmute yourself, and you're permitted to turn on your video should you wish, and you'll have three minutes for your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. My name is Rosaria Sinisi, and I represent Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning of Clinton Hill and Fort Greene. This application involves a large and much abused building on a prominent corner of the Fort Greene Historic District, three sides of which are fully visible from the public thoroughfares. The proposal has some points to recommend it. However, there are also areas where we feel it needs work. The proposal for the front Adelphi Street facade is a reasonable solution and contextual with its surroundings, save for the anomalous design of the door under the stoop, which does not resemble any historic stoop door in the area. We recommend that applicant locate a salvaged cast iron stoop door and design the masonry around the new stoop to fit it. The Oriole window proposed for the building's side facade along Willoughby is non-contextual in both materials and design. Attached to our letter are photos of Oriole windows in the immediate vicinity, and the original is clearly visible in the applicant's tax photo. We recommend a bay configuration with a wood appearing surface and more appropriately period heavy moldings and cornice for the Oriole, rather than the squared-off metal Oriole proposed by the client. Also, the roof railing that is visible from Willoughby should be moved back until it is no longer visible from that thoroughfare. We also note that the house directly across Willoughby from this property does in fact have a cornice that goes the entire length of Willoughby around the corner. It faces on Adelphi. The rear yard addition, the rear facade, is entirely visible from the north side of Willoughby for over half that block. You can see our photos. Its adjacent neighbors' addition at 204 Adelphi, also was visible from Willoughby, is appropriately designed to echo a historic tea porch. But applicant's proposed addition features a blocky structure with the same inappropriate metal surface material and lack of properly proportioned moldings and detail as it does for this proposal for the Oriole. As one of the reference images, applicant produces a two-story extension in Borum Hill, referencing historic 19th century tea porch design, which could serve as a model for this applicant's addition. The Borum Hill example has fenestration centered on the addition, period-appropriate, heavier and more historic moldings and trim, window mullion locations echoing those of the upper floors above it. This creates a harmonious whole on the rear facade, and a similar approach would be less visually intrusive from the sidewalk of Willoughby Avenue. The proposed carport would introduce a large bulk into the back of the rear yard, visible from Willoughby. This would add to the visual confusion of the proposed rear addition. Apparently, the property once had a separate garage, and we recommend the construction of another, perhaps with carriage house proportions. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, when we looked at this proposal, we found a lot to like. We are pleased to see the recreation of the parlor floor entrance and stoop on a once charming house that's been stripped of its details. The replacement of aluminum one-over-one sash with wood two-over-two sash over brownstone sills is equally welcome. The bay window proposed for the Willoughby Street facade will restore the missing facade feature typical to houses of this area. The rear addition is detailed to suggest a tea porch, also historically typical. The design of the iron stoop railings and areaway fence is in keeping with the overall character of the neighborhood. And we feel the applicant has made a reasonable proposal to incorporate the one-story addition made to this house before designation into the overall design. However, we do not support all the changes the applicant is asking for. The proposal to eliminate the cast iron window lentils from the front facade is destructive. These lentils have been in place for 165 years. The originals should be retained as a remnant and reminder of the original house. We also believe the design misses some opportunities to better integrate this house into the neighborhood, which consists largely of pre-Civil War Italianate-style houses. These include the decision not to remove the infill below the parlor floor window sills on the front facade. Tall parlor front windows are an elegant detail seen in the tax photo of this house. They're also seen at their neighbors at 204 Adelphi and at two of the three houses shown on Board One as reference images. The remaining arch cast iron lentils should be used as a guide for other lentils, especially at the third floor of the front facade. The original builder's decision to extend the cornice along the Willoughby Street side facade was excellent. The current proposal will minimal, with minimal coping stones atop the parapet, leaves this facade looking underdesigned. The cornice should be extended across this developed side facade, and its detailing should better reflect the Italianate style of the original buildings of the district. Finally, we question the decision to use zinc cladding on the new bay window of the rear yard addition. Wood or cement beadboard cladding would be more in keeping with the character of the district. Thank you, Commissioners.
Anyone else joining us, I assume, who wishes to offer testimony? Please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval on the condition that the applicant reconsider the material and design of the bay window and two-story rear yard extension, and remove the deck and replace it with a stair and landing on the south side of the property. Society for Clinton Hill recommends mixed approval, asking that the applicant further study the design of 19th century moldings and cornices, use wooden surface finishes on its Oriole and extension, and redesign the Oriole window and rear addition to be contextual and appropriate. In addition, Fort Greene Association recommends denial. LPC receives one written letter of testimony recommending approval.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
Add quite a bit of detail to the Oriole window. Then so, I don't, I, under the stoop door, I'm a little confused about that comment. I do have a picture of, like to see in the appendix of the design of that, just so you can see. There it is. So it is a, it has a sort of very similar to our fence design, which is at the top. We have simple pickets. Sorry, this really resolution doesn't look so wonderful here with the, it's supposed to be a glass. It's a, it's a glass panel boat behind. It's not actually look like, looks like a screen here. But it has a circle at the top and the bottom, so.
Okay, so a glass panel behind a metal grill.
You know, with iron pickets with semi-circular connectors at the top and the bottom, and making the street fence design.
Okay. Commissioners, any final questions? Move to our discussion. Commissioner Wilder, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Commissioner Quembe, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And there are multiple components here. I think the first big move is looking at the treatment for the two main facades. So this is a building that was significantly altered in the past. It was, as we have already discussed, a two-story and basement building with a pitched roof and dormers. And at some point, it was raised in brick to three stories above the basement. And all of the details were stripped, with the exception of the cast iron lentils at the second floor. And the, so the proposal is to, rather than restore to the appearance in the tax photo, which would involve removing the top floor or significantly scaling it back, given the size and massing of the building, they looked at other three-story and basement buildings in the neighborhood as a model for their proposed design. And so they are proposing to do new brownstone lentils, a cornice, a brownstone base, restoring a stoop with a door underneath the stoop, which evokes a grill. And I will say, the commission, while historically, the under the stoop opening had a metal grill in it, the commission has approved door versions of that with, similar to this, with glazing behind a grill. And we've even approved sometimes some solid doors. And then on the side facade, constructing a new bay window and a zinc cladding, with a zinc cladding. And then at the rear, a new two-story rear yard addition with the same zinc cladding. And then at the, modifying the fence at the backyard and doing a carport at the rear of the property. And so there are questions. I think the big question really has to do with the approach and the question of the lentils. And should they be viewed as significant remnants of the original design that should be retained? Or do they, in some ways, not have so much meaning now that the facade has otherwise been stripped? And is it appropriate to remove those and do square lentils based on the others? So that's a thing that we'll have to all discuss as we get there. And then, you know, and then the other details for the facade treatment we'll be discussing as well. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
When I saw this one last night, I thought, it's appropriate. And especially when I saw the side facade, and I saw the Oriole, and I saw the way the plan and the carport and all that was placed. And I did agree that the cornice was important on this facade. I thought it would just tie it all together. And, you know, when I looked at the front facade, I thought it was fine. And listening to my fellow commissioners, and I see that there are pieces of it that could be, improve this to another level. I feel that the historical, historical, historical quality of. of the, of the window should be maintained in some way. And I think the critiques that I've heard would make it even better. But, but that's my comment on them.
Okay, all right. And you're comfortable with the size and scale and detailing and design of the rear yard addition and bay window? They're fine, okay. All right, Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I, I agree with Everardo. I, I think that the rear yard carport is fine. I think that the cladding of the concrete block wall with CMU is fine. I think that the rooftop railing is, is, is totally appropriate. I think the modifications to the brownstone stucco at the base are, and the stupor are all appropriate. I think the oriole window is perfectly lovely, and I think the rear yard addition is well within the, the framework of, that we normally approve. The use of a basically corrugated material is a little bit unusual, but I think it's okay. And we certainly approve zinc all the time, so I don't have a problem with it. I think that the, the challenge has to do with those lentils. And I think that, I mean, the first thing I would say is, is that staff might be very helpful on this in helping share with the applicant some options from around the neighborhood that might give some clues as to how to handle it. I think the fact that they're putting in new, new lentils above the top floor windows gives you the opportunity, and a new cornice, gives you the opportunity to include arched elements even over square-headed windows. The cornice of the original building had a kind of rather lyrical, arched kind of design to it. So, you know, I think there's lots of ways you can, you can make it look less Frankenstein-y. And, I mean, they're, they're using an arched door, which I think is quite nice, even though some of the testimony didn't love it. I, I think it's perfectly appropriate, but it, it brings, it brings the round top to, to the building. And if you look at the historic shot, right around the corner from an arched window is a square-headed window. So I think that the, the notion of having square-headed and round-headed windows live together peaceably, I think, is feasible. So I, I think that the applicant can work on that with staff, though, and I, I think it's really just in the details of the lentils and the cornice. I, I'm, I'm fine with the cornice not turning the corner. I think that, that there's probably examples of both that one could provide. This is certainly, there's certainly plenty of pedigree for this kind of cornice. So I, I really think the focus should be on the front facade.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm almost in total agreement with Commissioner Goldblum. I, I think that, yeah, I think the, the really is for the applicant to work with the staff on the front facade, whether, how, the treatment of the lentils. But the rest of them, I, I, I agree with the comments, including Eduardo's comments.
Commissioner Mann?
Interesting project, lots, very thought-provoking at a, you know, a somewhat smaller scale. Overall, I find it to be quite appropriate and, you know, the introduction of the brownstone and the stoop and the gate, the fence elements, there's some, certainly some deft moves creating subtle alignments between the guardrail and the taller fence beyond it. I appreciate all of that. I found it interesting because it's kind of transforming, you know, this building is going through its, I don't know, awkward teenage years, right? It, it's transforming it from one thing to a different typology, almost. And so in that regard, I find application of the cornice only to the front facade appropriate. And I would similarly, I'm okay similarly with the substitution of the archtop windows for flattop windows on the front facade. It's the same logic. They've kind of lost meaning, in my opinion. Referring to the original tax photo, you know, those arch tops were sort of given meaning by the arch of the cornice immediately above them. They even have some, some sort of... Thank you. So, so overall, I'm, I'm, I think it's, it's quite deft. I'm, I'm okay with the, the rear yard addition as well. And I think the, the zinc materiality will be lovely as well.
Right. Commissioner Wilder?
I think, like the rest of the commissioners, I do prefer the, keeping the arched lentils at the front. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think it was a good suggestion to consider maybe the top row of windows as well to be arched, if you want to make it more cohesive. But I think, I think it, it does add, even if it's just at that second floor, it does add a little bit of character that may have been lost in, in extending the height of the building. I think I'm fine with the cornice not turning. I think I probably would like it more if it did turn. If, you know, if you carefully looked at that and see, looked at ways to do it. I think there's a more richness to, even in the examples that were shared in those buildings to the ones that didn't have it. And I think the only other thing is the extension I do with, with the zinc. I don't mind the material. I do just think about the width of the extension and that being a solid material, especially with the back of that wall having little to no glazing towards, towards the rear of it. Just, and then I'm fine with the size of the carport. So yeah, I think, I think overall it's appropriate, but I think those things can be kind of looked at some more.
Okay. Commissioner Quembe?
I think it's interesting that the building itself was landmarked kind of in its transition period. So what we have to work with is what we have to work with. I do appreciate bringing elements back, like the front stoop, to try to make it reminiscent of what it used to be. But I do find it unfortunate that the second floor arch windows were removed. How that could be integrated and how that could work, I guess that takes some exploration. I guess also, I'm, I'm not, I'm not too... Yes, I wouldn't say I'm, I'm too... I don't know if I'm completely in alignment with the, the choice of the zinc material. And then also, the, the building is a corner building, and it's very visible from many locations. So I don't know if the zinc itself is, is appropriate, but that also brings us back to this building that's in a transition zone and has been kind of put in stasis in that, in that sense. So it's, it's a lot to think about. And I guess I'm still thinking.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
So I'm, I'm good with a lot of the elements here. The rear facade, the zinc material is unusual, but I can understand it's a more contemporary kind of interpretation, along with the oriole window on the side. So I think that's fine. The new stoop is fine. The cornice is fine on the front facade. And the carport is fine. I think, so the interesting thing is the arched lintel windows on the second floor. Do we keep them or not? And at first, I thought, yes, we should definitely keep them and work through whatever design elements there are. And then I listened to Commissioner Mann, and I was like, you know what? I think that makes sense. Because, because this design element that they have right now with the flat lentils is cohesive. I mean, it all makes sense. And so I'm actually okay with the flat lentils. So I can support the application as is.
All right. Okay, so I think where we are, and I appreciate everybody's comments, and I, and I also sort of questioned the meaning of the lentils without, you know, given that it's a three-story facade and really looking toward a, a different style and type for its inspiration. But it does seem like the majority of commissioners present would like to see those lentils retained. And I think we're largely supportive of everything else. I think that they, the question of the cornice wrapping is something where I think we have support for it as presented, but maybe that's something that they could explore working with staff. So I, I don't know if you're comfortable with making that motion, Commissioner Jefferson. I can do it if, so it would be, it would be to, at this point, to keep the lentils at the second floor and then to explore turning the cornice around the...
In a matter of LTC-25-11563 go to Adelphi Street, application is to modify and replace windows, install cornice, ironwork, stoop, and bay windows, modify a wall, and construct a rear yard addition, carport, and bike enclosure. I know that the building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Fort Greene Historic District. Staff also know, I, I also note that the building was altered with the removal of a porch, of the porch and construction of a four-story prior to the designation of the Historic District. I recommend approval with modification finding that, except for the second-floor window lentils, the character-defining features of the Adelphi Street facade, original Italianate style, were lost prior to the designation of the Historic District. Therefore, the proposed facade works, work will not eliminate an intact, original facade design. That the 20th-century facade alterations are not unique or representative of exceptional detail or craftsmanship. Therefore, the work will not eliminate a significant later alterations. That the brownstone tinted, brownstone tilted, stucco base, stoop, ironwork, entrance hood, and cornice would be consistent with the aspect of historic, historic Italianate-style facade found on the block and throughout the Historic District. That the windows and doors would be comparable with the Adelphi Street facade designs, and that the surrounding street capes, in terms of material, configuration, operation, details, and finish, that the proposed oriole window at the Willoughby Avenue facade would be modern, would be a modern interpretation of a traditional feature found throughout the Historic District. Will provide articulation of this facade and will relate to the contemporary treatment of the proposed rear addition. The other rear yard addition of the similar height and depth exists within the block, and therefore, the proposed two-story rear yard addition will not overwhelm the building or the block's central green space. That the design and material reality of the rear yard addition featuring gray material cladding with a textured panel configuration and a dark gray painted multi-light windows and doors will recall the level of articulation found at historic rear tea porches and will harmonize with the residential scale of the buildings and other buildings on the block. That the proposed brown tinted stucco, finished in black finish, metal picket fence, with a back, backing panel at the rear yard wall will relate to the materials and finishes of walls and fences in the streetscape. And that the presence of a carport with bike enclosure at the rear of the lot will be keeping with rear extensions and ancillary buildings, sometimes located behind the house at corners, at corner lots within this Historic District. And will have a discreet present, presence within the street capes. I find, however, that the historic arch cast lintel at the second floor of the Adelphi Street facade are significant architectural features of the building. That the expanse of metal cladding at the side facade...
You can skip that one.
No, absolutely.
So just the, right, so I think, and we can just say that we'll recommend that the lentils be retained at the second floor. Yeah, just the lentils be retained at the second floor and, and that the applicant...
Recommend that the historic arch cast lentils
Yep.
be retained and incorporated in the design of Adelphi Street facade. And the remaining lentils be studied for compatibility with them in consultation with staff.
Yes, and that they can explore wrapping the corner onto the Willoughby Avenue.
Perhaps they can study the cornice on Willoughby Street.
Got it. Great. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark? Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Quembe?
Aye.
Jefferson? Commissioner Mahan?
Aye.
Master?
Aye.
Wilder?
Aye.
Unopposed, the motion passes.
All right. Thank you. So that concludes our morning session. We're going to break for lunch now, and we will resume with a public hearing, item number three, at 1:30. We'll ask all members of the public to exit the hearing room at this time and all members of the public on the Zoom meeting to exit the Zoom meeting at this time so that you don't have any technical difficulties that might arise if we remove you and you wish to return this afternoon.